Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Successor Agency, to the Redevelopment Agency meeting of April 27, 2015. We are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by the members of the San Carlos Eaton Hills 4-H Club. So would you all please rise? Thank you. Okay. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if you can give me just a second. There was a suggestion made earlier that we switch, I believe it's one of the public hearing items, and move the Holly item. Let's see if I can find it here.
It's 9B.
It's 9B, yeah. So if we want to flip 9A and 9B, I would ask maybe that we kind of check in with the audience and those folks that are here, if that's okay with them. The staff doesn't have an issue with it.
All right. Are there people that are here to speak on the Holly issue that would rather that the item were addressed sooner rather than later? You just want to raise your hands? Okay. Well, maybe we just leave it the way it is?
Are there folks that wanted to stay the way it is? One-nothing?
It doesn't matter to me.
Your call.
All right. Well, why don't we just, just as a courtesy, let's do it anyway. We'll make, so 9A, we will take 9B before 9A. Okay. All right. Is there any report from the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, there's no report from closed session at the special meeting.
All right. Thank you. Now, we're going to have council communications and announcements. These are brief items by members of the council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken at these items, on these items at this meeting. All right. Let's start with, Matt, you want to start?
I actually think this happened before the last council meeting, and I didn't think about it, was the subcommittee that you guys put me on for the dog park. We did meet, and we looked over the park and made some decisions, and we're going to be looking at what kind of fencing to put in. But that is, you know, in the works and moving along, so just thought I'd let you know.
Okay. Thank you. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing this evening.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two brief items. One is I attended, on behalf of the council, a board meeting of the South Bay Southwest Management Authority, Waste Management Authority, last week, at which we discussed their long-range plan and various other things. And for the benefit of the audience, those are the folks who manage our garbage and recycling collection. And I also had, as a number of us did, the opportunity to participate in the Black Mountain Properties Open House that was held on Saturday, which was very well-attended. I was not keeping track of the number of people that were going up and down the road, but it sure looked like several hundred people to me. And I did also want to specifically compliment, since I was down at a little bit of a lower level, compliment both the mayor and the vice mayor and the city manager for doing an excellent job in the presentations. I had quite a few people, both onsite that day and afterwards, reach out to me and say that they thought you really all did a bang-up job. So, thank you.
Okay. Cameron?
Thank you, Ron. Yeah, I will echo what Mark said about the Black Mountain Open House. It was a great event. I thought the staff did a really wonderful job with the presentation materials, and, you know, we got a lot of really positive comments, so I was excited to see that. With Mark and Ron, I attended the annual progress seminar in Monterey, which is a retreat for San Mateo County elected officials and other San Mateo County stakeholders. We heard a State-of-the-County address from Supervisor Carol Groom, as well as attended a number of breakout sessions on issues like housing and transportation and the digital divide. I'm the city's representative to the Association of Bay Area Governments, also known as A-Bag, and we had the A-Bag Annual Meeting on Thursday. It was a good meeting. There was a lot of discussion about water issues, as you might imagine. Unfortunately, A-Bag requires a quorum of 50 cities to attend and only 47 attended, so we were unable to vote on the budget this time, so they're going to do a conference call, I think, or something to get that done. Lastly, on Friday, I attended the Council of Cities Dinner, which is a monthly dinner of elected officials from San Mateo County in Millbrae, which was a nice dinner. The main topic of conversation was Super Bowl LV, which, as many of you may know, will be hosted in the San Francisco Bay Area at Levi's Stadium in February of 2016. So we got a presentation from the host committee about all the effort that's going into creating a great Super Bowl week, really, with a Super Bowl Village up in San Francisco, and talked about transportation, how to get people tuned from the city, and how City San Carlos can participate as a Bay Area community. So it was a good presentation, and that's all I got.
Great. Thanks, Cameron. Well, I had a couple of things. I also went to the Council of Cities Dinner, and again, congratulations to Cameron for his selection, to the Transit Authority, as the county, one of the county representatives. I'm also a member of the Caltrain Electrification Task Force, and we had a very interesting meeting last Thursday in which they talked about things like level boarding, which, if you've taken Caltrain recently, when the train stops, you have to step up to get into it. And what they're talking about now, when the new electric cars come in in a few years, is creating a boarding platform, sort of like BART. So you just walk straight from the platform on to the train. There are some issues with high-speed rail, because those trains are going to be different, and they're only going to stop at, I believe, one or two stations. So there was a long discussion about what those stations would look like. But the good thing about it is that we are moving forward with electrification. It looks like it's probably be onboard, no pun intended, in about four or five years. The other thing that's been going on, and from time to time, people have expressed some concern, is that if you go up and down the corridor, you may notice, probably not yet in this area, but as the electrification process moves along, there are these things, so it's called a catenary system, which is poles and wires that go over. And because of that, there are going to be some trees that are going to be impacted by that. And what the Caltrain engineers have been doing is tagging some of those trees, and they were, they wanted to point out to us, and I thought I'd pass it along, that if you see a tag on a tree, that doesn't mean that the tree is going to be removed. It means that it may be looked at, it may be pruned, and it may be removed, but it's not something that they're certain. It's basically really an inventory process to find out how many trees are going to potentially be impacted by the electrification. So I just want people to know, if you see a red tag on it, it doesn't mean that that tree's necessarily going to be removed. Let's see if there was anything else about that. I don't think so. And again, I want to thank everybody that was at the Saturday Black Mountain presentation. It was a very impressive crowd, as Cameron and Mark pointed out. And again, my thanks to all the staff that were there, did a wonderful job, and to our city manager, Jeff Malpe, who handled the presentation with an expert ability. So thank you, Jeff. Okay. So moving along, are there any staff comments on city administrative business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two fairly brief ones this evening. First, I'd just like to remind the community, as our police chief has asked me to do, that on Saturday, May 9, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., our San Carlos Police Bureau, a bureau of the Sheriff's Office here at City Hall, will be hosting an open house for folks to be able to come, take a look, meet their police officers in the community, take a look at some of our facilities and technology. They're going to be offering free fingerprinting and giveaways to the kids that come to the event. So hopefully, you all can attend Saturday, May 9, 10 to 3, here at City Hall. Secondly, I have a short video that the city has produced related to Black Mountain Properties that's going to begin running and popping up on computers all over the community shortly. And I was able to have some positive interaction with the community at the event this Saturday, where a number of people suggested that we do a video, so that people who couldn't actually get up there and see the property have the opportunity to do that. And we told them, stay tuned. We've already done one, and it's about to debut now.
All right. Wow. That was, what, 15 seconds? That was great. All right. Was that it? Okay, great. All right. Next, item six is presentations. We're going to have a couple of proclamations. I'm going to come around here and present them. The first up is the San Carlos Eaton Hills 4-H Club for their community service. Why don't you face the audience? So every, is this on? Hello? It's on. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. When I was growing up, my cousins lived across town, and my cousin Vicki was always in the 4-H. And the best thing about 4-H, I thought, was that they always had a dog. It was always a golden retriever, a German shepherd, or something like that. And I always wanted to join it. My mother, I don't know why my mother wouldn't let me, but she didn't. But my aunt and uncle let my cousins join. So 4-H has been around San Carlos for, I don't know, a lot longer than all these, probably if you added up all their ages, it's probably been a lot, a lot, a long, or here, as longer than they've all been alive, certainly longer than I've been around. But tonight, we'd like to honor the 4-H Club, and what I'd like to do, I think, do you have someone that you've selected as a spokesperson that's going to tell us a little bit? You all have short things, and why don't, well, let's do this. Why don't you introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what you're doing? And I think we also have some artwork, is that right, to show? Some pictures? Okay. Well, let's start with this young lady.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name's Elise Waka. So before I start, I just want to thank the mayor and the council members for having us here today. So I've been in 4-H for seven years now, and I'm 12-years-old, so I started in kindergarten. And I've done so many fun projects, like guinea pigs, manga art, duct tape, and especially community detectives. So I've also had a lot of fun working with the Lions Club through their events like the crab feed and tri-tip dinner. They've been a huge supporter of 4-H for a really long time, and we're so grateful for them. So through community detectives, we got to work with Tom Davids of San Carlos together, and he helped organize our events like potting flowers for the flowerpots on Laurel Street, and painting benches, and the horseshoe pit at Burton Park. He even helped us to weed out the garden next to the commu, sorry, the youth center at Burton Park. So can I have all the community detective members stand up? Yay! And then I'd also like to thank Tom Davids for all his help this year. And next up, here's Nolan. He's a great member of community detectives.
Yeah, hi. Yeah, I guess you know my name. This is my fourth year in 4-H, and one thing we did for community detectives was to plant the flowers that will go on Laurel Street. Another thing that we did was to plant the picnic tables in the horseshoe pit at Burton Park. And a couple of weeks ago, we cleaned out the garden beside the youth center, and then we planted squash, tomatoes, and chard there, so you can eat those, I guess? Yeah, that was my favorite meeting. So thanks for listening.
My name is Anya Noth, and I'm the president of our club this year. We have 140 members, ages 5 to 19-years-old. And 4-H in general focuses on leadership development, life skills, and civic responsibility through a variety of projects, such as cooking, beekeeping, computer programming, shooting sports, public speaking, and our annual club-wide Capture the Flag game. You saw our beginner 4-Hers experience public speaking by leading the pledge tonight. I was one of them 11-years ago. When I was younger, I did beginning cooking, as well as raised chickens, and eventually raised lambs on our club farm. Last year, I led the community service project, and this year, I helped lead the horses project and helped teach younger 4-Hers about horses. And here's some more of our officers to talk about their experiences.
Hi, my name's Cora Keegan. This is my seventh year in 4-H. I am the treasurer of our 4-H club, and as the treasurer, I have to manage two accounts. One is our farm account, and one is our general account. So for each account, I have to manage how much money we have. I have to write down, I have to write down all checks to every single person I'm going to deliver them to, and I have to get them signed. So there's a lot of responsibility in that, but I take pride in it. And this has been my second year, my final year as the treasurer, which I'm sad to see. But yeah, so that's what I do as a treasurer. And I'm also a junior team leader, a part of our SET project. And so as our SET project, it stands for Science, Engineering, and Technology. So we do, like, different science experiments, and we build things, and we learn new technologies. And so as a junior team leader, I, like, watch over the kids and help lead the project.
Hi, I'm Daphne. I am one of the junior farm bosses for our 4-H club. This is my fifth year in 4-H, and I've raised two lambs and four pigs.
I'm Anthony. I'm the other junior farm boss of our club, and I've been in 4-H for five years, and I've raised one lamb and one pig.
So first off, we just wanted to thank the city and everyone on the city council for allowing us to use the land at the end of Oak Creek Lane as our farm. And this is something that's very unique to our club, and we are so privileged and lucky to be given such great opportunities right here in San Carlos. The farm is so incredibly important to our youth, and many 4-Hers who have had the opportunity to raise animals in San Carlos and on our farm have been inspired by their experiences and have gone on to study fields in medicine for humans and animals, education, farming, and business in agriculture. Joining the farm has opened up more and more relationships within the agriculture community for all of us. Being a member of the farm has given us opportunities to meet people in the agriculture community all over California, through breeders, veterinarians, feed company representatives, big and small production farms, college professors, and the list continues to go on.
So also, the importance of the farm to me was it taught me the importance of responsibility and, like, taking care of your animal, and also how to plan ahead. And then also, our club this year had the opportunity to raise the Penn Pride animals. And when you've ever been to the fair, you can usually see the Penn Pride animals. They used to be a steer, but now they're two pigs. And the kids that have been part of the Penn Pride, they have been, they've given the opportunity to see what it's like to raise an animal without fully being there every day.
So to close, I'd like to give a little history background on our city. So some may think of farm in San Carlos, like, really? But actually, so there are many people who helped shape the foundation of San Carlos. The first American to purchase land and inhabit San Carlos area was Timothy Guy Phelps. In 1851, Phelps began purchasing land from the Arguellos Rancho de Las Pulgas, totaling 3,500 acres in all, where he raised cattle. What may not be a farm town today, we are so lucky San Carlos still has this little piece of history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. I was going to read the proclamation, but everything you need to know about 4-H has just been explained. Thank you. That was a, that was a great presentation. I keep thinking, if my mother could have only heard you guys describe. By the way, do you clean up private yards, too? All right. Well, thank you all so much, and, by the way, I knew this once, I forgot it, and now I'm glad I was reminded, that the H, when you think of 4-H, it stands for heads, hearts, hands, and health. But the 4-H does so much more today than they did 50-years ago, and I'm very happy about that. So who would like to receive this from the city with our thanks? All right. Well, thank you very much. All right. We have one more.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair. Perhaps 4-H would be willing to accept, you know, gray-haired new member.
Oh, yeah. Where do I apply? I have gray hair? Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry. A youthful, a youthful new member.
Our second presentation tonight, and I apologize to Bill Chang for having to follow the 4-H club. Bill Chang from PG&E is here. And April is Safe Digging Month, and as any of you may recall, or may have been reading the papers, it never was more important than, what, about 10-days ago in Fresno, where someone who was digging didn't know where the PG&E line was and cracked it, and there was several injuries. Hopefully, no deaths. No deaths, so that's great. Bill, we appreciate your service to us, and you're always keeping us informed on what's going on with PG&E. So I'd like to honor you and PG&E with this proclamation for National, or State Safe Digging Month, or PG&E Safe Digging Month. All right. Does anything you want to do, say to the audience? Yes, certainly.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, this council and city staff, for squeezing this in on today. I know you're very busy. I'm glad there's a lot of folks here, because I can't reiterate the importance of calling 811 before any kind of digging project, whether it's your contractor or yourself in your, on your own property. And it's not just PG&E's infrastructure, it's the city sewer lines, it's the city's water lines, it's telecommunications. And if you hit something, I mean, the least that can happen is your weekend project is ruined. And the worst, let's not even talk about what's the worst that can happen. And again, it's not just PG&E's infrastructure. So if I can give everyone here some numbers, in 2015 alone, in January, February, and March, there were 46 instances on the peninsula in San Mateo County of someone hitting some level of gas line that belongs to PG&E. So that's 46 instances where something really bad could have happened, but luckily did not. And for context, that's 46 instances in San Mateo County, that's, and in all of the city of San Jose, which is a city of a million people, there were only 30. So I think collectively, we can all do better here on the peninsula, including PG&E. So, and we're, we're happy to partner with the city of San Carlos right now on an 811 call before you dig project, and San Carlos is leading the county in that effort. So thank you for San Carlos.
Thank you. 11? Okay. Oh, new business, okay. I guess we'll give him a moment to clear out. Okay. Well, I guess civic engagement's not one of the 4-H goals. All right, we're going to move on to item seven, public comment. Hang on just a minute. All right. Persons wishing to address city council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you're speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the city council may briefly respond to statements made or questions asked or posed as allowed under the Brown Act. Our general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have the matter placed on a future city council agenda for a more comprehensive action or report in formal public discussion and input at that time. All right. Let's see. I have, try and see if I have anybody for, I do not have anything on the, no speakers for an item not on the public, not on the agenda. All right. Is there anybody who didn't turn in a card and would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward. You can fill out a slip after, after you're done.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Shadi. I've been born and raised in San Carlos, but this is the first time I've been to a city council meeting, actually. So the reason I'm here is because I wanted to tell you all about a startup that I've been working on for the past six months. We're doing sustainable bottled water, and we're changing the bottled water industry. So our product is an aluminum bottled water that's refillable, and that's the name of our company, is Refill It. I don't want to speak too long, but if anyone would like to come and reach out to me, we'd love to speak to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Moving along. Approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Mr. Mayor?
I wanted to remove items E, F, and G, although it's solely because I voted against those items, so I don't want to vote yes on the consent calendar, so however you want to handle that.
You want them pulled because you voted no?
Yeah, because I voted, yeah, I voted no on those items.
In voting for the item, in the past, we've allowed councilmen who are voting against just because, are voting against the consent calendar just because of one item, that you can just record that, and that'll be reflected in the minutes, and then you can proceed with approving the consent calendar if you'd like.
All right. Is that good?
Just to be consistent?
Sure. That's fine.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar. Say.
All right. Motion?
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, there's three ordinances that we'd just like you to read those ordinances into the record.
Okay.
Let's see. So that would, my motion would include adopting ordinance 1485, amending Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, consisting of changes to building placement standards in the MU-DC district for the 700 and 800 blocks of Walnut Street and in the MU-D district, as well, adopt ordinance 1486, amending Municipal Code Section 13.12, adding preference for vendors and non-professional services utilizing environmentally sustainable materials, products, or methods in the city of San Carlos, and adopt ordinance 1487, amending Municipal Code Section 5.04.120, adding mobile food facilities as a business type, and updating fee amounts to reflect past and future increases under Section 5.04.090.
Okay. I don't think we need another second for that, right?
I actually didn't catch the "who" second that.
I've seconded it.
Bob did. Yeah. All right. Ray, Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gokat?
For all of them.
items, so I don't want to vote yes on the consent calendar. So however you want to handle that.
You want them pulled because you voted no?
Yeah, because I voted, yeah, I voted no on those items.
In voting for the item, in the past, we've allowed councilmen who are voting against just because, are voting against the consent calendar just because of one item, that you can just record that, and that'll be reflected in the minutes, and then you can proceed with approving the consent calendar if you'd like.
All right. Is that good? Just to be consistent?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Sir? All right.
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, there's three ordinances that we'd just like you to read those ordinances into the record.
Okay.
Let's see. So that would, my motion would include adopting ordinance 1485, amending Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code consisting of changes to building placement standards in the MU- DC district for the 700 and 800 blocks of Walnut Street and in the MU-D district, as well, adopt ordinance 1486, amending Municipal Code Section 13.12, adding preference for vendors and non-professional services utilizing environmentally sustainable materials, products, or methods in the city of San Carlos, and adopt ordinance 1487, amending Municipal Code Section 5.04.120, adding mobile food facilities as a business type, and updating fee amounts to reflect past and future increases under Section 5.04.090.
Okay. I don't think we need another second for that, right?
I actually didn't catch the who second that.
Bob did. Yeah. All right. Ray, Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gokat?
Yes.
For all of them.
Yes, except with the understanding.
Except for E, F, G. Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item, I think we agreed to move item 9B before 9A. This is to receive a presentation on the results to date of the parking restrictions and striping changes on Holly Street from Industrial Road to Old County Road and provide city staff with direction regarding additional measures to explore. Jay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director, to present this item to you tonight. So as the council and members of the public can remember, back in July of 2014, we had the opportunity to come forward to amend the parking restrictions on Holly Street from Industrial to Old County to implement restrictions between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And the council at the time also approved implementing a new signal timing strategy on Holly Street for, with the purpose and intent of trying to help traffic get through the stretch of Holly Street between the freeway and the downtown or back in a more efficient manner. And in October of 2014, we actually went ahead and implemented the parking restrictions, and we striped for two lanes in each direction and modified the timing. Around that time, we hired traffic consultants that could come in and help us with the traffic counts and travel time runs before and after the modifications were made because we wanted to try to have some data that we could use as we move forward with seeing how effective the changes were. So tonight, this is really an interim report to you as a council. We still have some data to be collected this summer. In particular, in August, we plan another run, another travel time run and traffic count because that will give us one particular before and after, that is, the timeframe when we had before the improvements were in place, and then once the improvements are in place. So we felt it was important to get at least that information to compare the apples to apples. Earlier on this year, lawsuit was filed, and that was filed against the project that council had approved that we were moving forward with. And at the time, staff was directed to stop work on other potential improvements to Holly Street, especially in the area between Industrial and Old County. Now that the lawsuit's been dismissed, one of the things that we need direction from you on is what else we want to do through there. And I think there's some good ideas that have been suggested by our residents and others. And so I think tonight is an opportunity for you to hear what some of those were and give us some feedback on those so that we can move forward with the potential implementation of some other improvements. And as well, we want to make sure, as I mentioned before, that we have the opportunity to get that last count of the traffic in summer, as it'll be the good before and after comparison. So many suggestions were received through email and other conversations that we've had, so I felt like I would go ahead and walk through those. And again, as council has questions on these, we'd be happy to try to address those. What I've included in here is, at the end of each of the suggestion, is an order of magnitude cost. That's by no means exactly what it's going to cost, but it's my sense of what would be required for us to go ahead and follow through and potentially implement these suggestions. So the first one, as it relates to decreasing the speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour, one of the things that we must do as a city, and the police chief will definitely back me up on this, is we must do an engineering and traffic survey of that street section to be able to make a determination of whether we would change the speed limit or not. Council simply doesn't have the ability to change that speed limit on their own, so we want to make sure that we're following the process. And the Holly Street corridor, further than just this one section, is coming close to being due for a new engineering and traffic survey. So I've included that cost as to what I believe that would take for us to be able to complete that work. Second one, providing better signage. The idea may be electronic signs that would change depending upon the time of day that would alert drivers that cars are parked on the right lane ahead. That's been one of the most common complaints we've had from folks, is that on those hours when the parking is not restricted, they're sometimes surprised to see the parked cars in the right lane ahead because we have signs in place, but they're not necessarily easy to read, maybe in the evening or when there's traffic around them. So it's something we feel like could be done to help improve that situation. And if we use electronic signs with providing power and the, all the work that would be involved in that, I think it would probably be in the neighborhood of about $100,000. The other idea was, another idea was restricting large vehicles, especially large tractor-trailers, semi-trucks from Holly Street while we have the two-lane configuration. Maybe it could be all the time, but this is something which we would have to definitely have an opportunity to reach out to the trucking industry. We would need to talk to Belmont, particularly because there would probably be some of those trucks that would be diverted off on Harbor Boulevard in Belmont. And then to implement this, we would have to have some signs on 101 as well. And those are signs which are quite a bit more costly than any signs that we would put up within the city. So I used an estimate of that to try to cover all of those various costs. Improving traffic light synchronization at Old County and El Camino, I think we could continue to look at that. A consultant's time would probably be in the range of about $15,000. One suggestion was made that we might signalize Holly Street at Laurel and put that into the interconnect plan that has Old County, El Camino, on Holly Street, and to fully signalize that location with equipment, detection, and all that's required would be about $200,000. And then another suggestion that was made was to widen the driveway aprons on Holly Street to make it easier for residents to enter and exit their driveways during the times when parking is prohibited or even at other times. And we looked at the cost based on some of our more current costs for curb gutter and sidewalk, and that would probably be in the range of about $200,000 for all the properties along that section of Holly Street. Providing additional paved areas adjacent to existing driveways was suggested. That would allow more cars to park off the street. That's one which I think has a planning connotation, so I think we would have to work with our planners on that to help if we were going to modify the zoning regulations to allow that. So I don't have a cost on that because I think it's early staff time that's required first before anything would be done. Repairing or replacing all the sidewalks along Holly Street to enhance pedestrian safety, I have that marked down as $200,000 like the estimate from before. That's all the properties fronting Holly from one end to the other. There was a suggestion made to reduce the hours of no parking on Holly Street to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. That could simply be done by changing the signs. However, that's one which doesn't correspond to the data that we had collected before when we have higher volumes of traffic on Holly Street from the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM timeframe. There was also a suggestion to study closing the southbound US 101 exit at Holly for westbound traffic, requiring drivers to use other exits from the freeway. So you could exit southbound from, at Holly Street, but you would be required to turn left and go over the freeway to the Red Bitchores area. And this is one which would definitely require consultant time for traffic simulation efforts, Caltrans approval before they would allow us to do that. There would definitely have to be a consideration of any other impacts that might occur at the adjacent interchanges. So I've included in there some consultant time for us to be able to study that more thoroughly if the council wants to go that direction. Just a couple more, and then opportunity for questions. One suggestion made to purchase a house on either side of Holly Street to create additional parking for the residents. Generally speaking, cost of the, acquiring the property, the demolition, and the paving of the parking lots would probably be in the $2 million range for that alternative. Another suggestion to create one-way couplets that would involve East San Carlos Avenue and Holly Street in a westbound and eastbound direction, or further out, Taylor Way, Terminal Way, to reduce traffic on Holly Street. Those would have significant costs for improving both Industrial Road and Old County Road, and kind of looked at that in the neighborhood of probably the $2 million range, the more work that you would have to do. It's also something which would be, it would be a big change to what we just completed on Old County Road, the bike boulevard, not the bike boulevard, but the bike routing and the bulbouts that have been placed. I think that would have to be modified in some way. The other suggestion was made to install a crosswalk on Holly Street halfway between Industrial and Old County to improve pedestrian safety. That's one which I believe would require us to have an electronic flashing crosswalk of some type. So by the time you get power and the equipment installed and everything, I think we're looking probably in the range of $50,000. Another suggestion was creating full interchanges at Britton Avenue or Harbor Boulevard to reduce the traffic on Holly Street. That I see as a very extensive effort, would require much coordination and approval from Caltrans, and it probably is in the 30, $40 million range by the time you've built bridges over the freeway and connected ramps in the northbound direction. And then the last one I have is that hiring a traffic consultant to run traffic simulations of various selected improvements in order to try to find that we have some quantifiable results. Generally speaking, consultants that have to run large-scale simulation efforts are probably in that range of $100,000. So I see that as something that it could be useful for many of these alternatives, the hiring of a traffic consultant to be able to help us kind of see how they would work and at least simulate to some degree the improvements. So just as a reminder, council, there had been some previous studies done for the Holly, Holly Street interchange and the Holly Street section between Industrial and Old County. Back in 2009, council authorized a study. There were, as I've noted, seven public meetings to discuss the alternatives. Those were community meetings and TNC meetings. The matrix of alternatives that was developed was reviewed with the public, and there were factors, criteria factors that were applied to that. And then the, as a TNC opportunity, they reviewed and recommended that, and in January, before January 2010, they approved the alternate for the Holly interchange project, which is what we've been pursuing and progressing towards since that time. And the reason I bring that up is that some of the alternatives studied were determined then to have unacceptable impacts. And one in particular was the one-way couplets that were identified earlier. The other one which actually has had, has moved forward and is an acceptable alternative is the bike boulevard that was recently built on East San Carlos Avenue to connect down to Industrial Road. So that was an outcome of these meetings. So next steps for council, we need your direction tonight on which suggestions you'd like us to pursue. I think the public, there's some public members here to provide some testimony in this regard. We want to collect that final traffic data this summer, and we'll bring, work on some refined cost estimates. And for those referred items, we'll take these back to the TNC for their review because they're very interested in this subject as well, and I know that they'll want to have an opportunity to look at that. And then we'll bring back the final results and projects for the council's approval. And again, depending upon what you ask us to look into, my sense is this is probably six to nine months, but again, it will all depend on what you've asked, what you ask us to pursue. So at this point, and then we'll implement as funds are budgeted, again, all depending upon what the council decides is appropriate. So at this point, I can take questions, and then I know that you want to hear public comment, public question.
Thanks, Jay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jay. Good presentation. Just some questions on the improvements, if I can quickly go down through the list. One of the things that came up in conversations I've had with folks there over the last few months was there were problems associated with garbage carts being set out on garbage collection day, and I guess some of our pedestrians walking on the sidewalks tended to push those off into the street to get them out of the way, which created a mess and inconvenience and stuff. Was that, did that come up in any of your discussions as well?
It didn't come up in any of the suggestions we saw from the public, but that is something that we've had an ongoing issue with at a number of times throughout the last several months. On Thursday morning, when garbage is collected along the street, there have been carts that have ended up in the gutter area, and that is potentially a problem with the lanes as narrow as they are. One of the potential opportunities there would be to consider paying for the backyard service, which would have the garbage dumped into the trucks and then those carts wheeled back onto the property some distance. So they wouldn't simply be left on the sidewalk. That's an unscheduled service in our current trash franchise with recollection right now, but that, there is an opportunity there.
Right. And personally, I'd certainly like that to be considered kind of in the mix of things. I don't know whether that'll survive the list of what we ask staff to look at. Next question had to do with the traffic light synchronization, and I know you said the cost numbers are primarily associated with studies and whatnot. I thought we did synchronization, not necessarily involving Holly and Laurel, but some of the other synchronization. So what would this actually do? What's the incremental benefit?
This would be looking again at the data that's been collected to see if there were, would be a benefit to make adjustments to any of the, we'll call it the cycles, for either Holly Street or El Camino or Old County Road. So I guess I'd say it would be, we could take a look at it and possibly make some tweaks to that because it was done, you were correct, and we paid a consultant for that work. And so this would be an opportunity perhaps to take a little closer look maybe at certain aspects of it.
Okay. The item about repairing or replacing sidewalks to enhance pedestrian safety, that's also one that I've heard resident input on. The $200,000, what would be involved with that? Would we be purchasing additional right-of-way to sort of move the sidewalks further back from the street or what?
In this particular case, this is leaving the curb lines at their existing position. So this is not moving the right-of-way back any further. If we did that, then there would be additional improvements on each of the properties that would have to be relocated, and I don't have a cost for those, but I know that there are many, a great number of fences, walls, hedges, trees, and other things that are just behind the sidewalk that make it narrow now. So that could be a suggestion that is considered, but we would have to take a look and again, sort of give an incremental cost beyond that, just replacing the concrete.
So, well, thank you for the clarification, but then what does, is this literally then just repairing the sidewalks?
That's what this cost represents, the linear foot cost of the curb, gutter, and sidewalk in its current position.
Okay. Installing a crosswalk halfway between Industrial and Old County, that was something that had come up in discussions I'd had, and various people had approached me and said the city used to have, not necessarily a lighted one, flashing light one, but they used to have one years ago there, and it was removed because it ended up being a safety problem. Are you familiar with that history or is that?
Not at all. I'm not, haven't been around long enough to know that that was there before.
Does anybody else on staff know whether we used to have one? So that, okay, that's.
Never heard that either.
At mid-block?
Yes.
No.
No, we didn't have one or no, we don't know?
I've never seen one there.
Okay, all right. Let's see, I think that's it for me for now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Bob?
Just a couple of quick questions. Jay, you mentioned the large vehicles, estimate about $50,000. Do we need Caltrans approval to put signs on the 101?
Yes, we do.
Okay. What's the estimated time that it would take to get them to do anything?
Well, one advantage is we have a, the head of traffic operations for Caltrans District Four is a San Carlos resident.
I did not know that.
That's right. And so I've got it in, I've already talked to him about this idea, and he has, he has said, yes, we're absolutely open to that. So it would end up being that time take to get the signs designed and placed.
Right. Okay. I apologize. The only couplet I know about is Shakespeare's. And so I'm sorry, what, I missed that day when we talked, if we talked about couplets, what are we speaking about there?
So I apologize, Mr. Councilmember Grisilli.
I probably don't remember.
The concept would be that, for example, let's, we'll use the Holly, East San Carlos Avenue couplet. So traffic would come off the freeway.
Yes.
And they would proceed westbound on Holly Street.
Yes.
That's the only direction they could go on Holly Street in that section.
Okay.
So they would get up to Old County Road and then cross over to El Camino.
Right.
Traffic that's coming eastbound would come underneath the railroad tracks on Holly, take a right.
Right, I got it.
And then make a left on East San Carlos Avenue.
Okay.
Down to Industrial, and then they'd have to make a left back over to Holly.
Okay. So basically just creating one-way streets?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Matt?
To be or not to be, that's the question. So my first, I just had a couple of questions here. If I heard you correctly, in terms of process, it sounds like you don't want to make any changes until we've done the traffic study in August. Like if we wanted to, for instance, do the vehicle, large vehicle change, or the speed limit change, or whatever, if, I thought I heard you say you want to wait on all this until we're, we've also completed the study in August?
No, I misspoke.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think now's the opportunity for council to give me direction so that we can begin pursuing some of these other things. I still need to collect that data in August to kind of give my, what, give the council and the community, I think, a complete picture of how things have changed out there.
Right.
We can work on these as soon as you tell me to.
Okay. Understanding that some could happen more quickly than others.
That's correct.
Right. Like the, the energy.
To be or not to be, that's the question. So my first, I just had a couple of questions here. If I heard you correctly, in terms of process, it sounds like you don't want to make any changes until we've done the traffic study in August. Like, if we wanted to, for instance, do the vehicle, large vehicle change, or the speed limit change, or whatever, if, I thought I heard you say you want to wait on all this until we're, we've also completed the study in August?
No, I misspoke.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think now's the opportunity for council to give me direction so that we can begin pursuing some of these other things. I still need to collect that data in August to kind of give my, what, give the council and the community, I think, a complete picture of how things have changed out there.
Right.
We can work on these as soon as you tell me to.
Okay. Understanding that some could happen more quickly than others.
That's correct.
Right. Like the interchange at Britton, I mean, that can happen tomorrow. And then the only other question I had was at the same, would it be unreasonable if we, you know, wanted to go this way? Same time that we look at the speeds on Holly, to look at speeds on Old County, especially as they pertain to the portions that are, that are, I would say, within the residential district and within the zone, it's an overlay, it's the same thing, but within the area of the train depot where people are crossing the street and that sort of thing.
We can, in fact, it would be a more efficient use of the consultant's time.
Great.
For us to do that.
All right, very good, thanks.
I'm sorry, you were done?
That's it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Cameron?
Thanks, Jay. Reading from the staff report, you said, we've done some data collection, and it says the data collected did not show any significant difference after changing the striping and parking restrictions on Holly Street. Does that mean what we did had no impact on traffic?
I, I don't characterize it that way necessarily, and the reason being that when we collected the before data, it was in August, so that's a summer timeframe. So we typically have lighter traffic, schools out, and so I think that, that travel times during that period of time would be different than in October and in March, when we did the other travel time surveys in the after condition. So the, so I think the, I think if we had not made the changes, our travel time runs would have shown to be much longer in October and March with the old configuration.
And so your aim is to verify that by looking at August 2015 and comparing it to August 2014?
That's correct.
And what, let's just imagine for a moment they're the same, you know, that the travel times are the same, and given, you know, we're, we're here, we're sitting here, it's April, talking about, you know, let's go out and spend a lot of consultant money to go potentially look at, you know, further projects. You know, what happens if the data comes back? What will you say if we said, well, we made these changes and it didn't have any impact?
Well, I think back at the, in, in the meetings before we enacted the new ordinance, I think one of the things that I mentioned was that this ends up being signs in paint, which can be removed, and we could revert back. But I think we would want to also look at what other opportunities that we had to improve the situation that we currently have. And the reason I say that is because we've had a lot of anecdotal evidence, comments from folks, that they, they believe and feel that the, that the flow through that section of Holly Street is working better now. Now, that's not scientific in any way, but that's a lot of people's perception, so it's one of those things which I think the council would need to consider, that there is a sense that it's flowing better, and, but what are the other things perhaps that we can, we can do to make it better or least, less impacting to the residents through there?
Right. I mean, I've heard comments from residents too, that they think it's flowing better, but of course, it comes at a considerable cost for the people who live on that street. I personally am not surprised to see so far that the data hasn't shown much of a difference because we already restricted parking during rush hour, which was the most significant time, and so this change was mostly directed at areas, I know despite the traffic counts that we saw before, to non-rush hour times, so I'm not surprised to see that. I wanted to follow up on Mark's question about the signalization. So when, can you, can you be a bit more specific? When did the signalization occur? Because I know we talked about it, but I don't think there's been any sort of update to council, and I know that was one of the, there was sort of a three key, it was sort of a three-legged stool that all had to be done at once. If I recall, it was, you know, striping, it was signalization, and it was, and the parking restrictions. And that was sold as a package that had to be done in unison. So when did the signalization update occur?
It occurred just prior to us installing the, the striping and the parking tees. So it was probably done, it was, it was in the Caltrans timing, in the cabinets at the signals, it was operational about two weeks before we striped.
And have we looked at any way to understand whether that's effective? I'm a little bit surprised to see, you know, saying, well, maybe we should go back and do other tweaks. It feels like maybe we don't have confidence that what we did was the right thing, or do we have any data to suggest that it was the right thing to do?
The, again, the anecdotal information from folks' perceptions of travel through the corridor. The, I guess the way I'll answer that is that the traffic signal timing tends to be an art rather than an exact science, because there are always factors. For example, the, when you are approaching westbound and you're sitting at the, at the light at Old County Road waiting to go under the train tracks, when that light turns green and cars begin to go under the train tracks, there's a two-lane left turn lane at El Camino. Very rarely is that ever full in two lanes. It's usually one lane making a left turn and one lane going straight through or turning right.
Sure.
So the, the capacity studies and the simulations, which assume two lanes full for that traffic flow, probably are not exactly happening in reality. So that's why we would want to take a look again and try to do some tweaks to perhaps account for that, and then, and then see if we can make some improvements that will realize the true nature of that is not two lanes delivering left turns, but only one.
Okay. So, but the state did make changes to the timing on El Camino?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And then I just wanted to ask sort of a larger kind of macro question. From, from your perspective, you know, you talked about a whole series of projects that you've heard from the community. There seems to be a bit of a grab-bag effect, you know, some of them are designed for further reduction of traffic, some of them are designed to mitigate, you know, some of the negative repercussions of taking away parking. You know, what do you think is sort of the best use of dollars at this point? Is your belief that we should be putting money into measures that further reduce traffic on Holly, or do you believe that money is better spent to try to make it easy for somebody to come out of their, you know, out of their driveway or park? You know, are we in a mitigation perspective, or are we, are we likely to get incremental traffic flow benefits from, from spending additional money? Do you see what I'm trying to say? I'm trying to say, you know, you're presenting it as, hey, we've, we've heard a lot of these things, but I'm looking for a little bit of Public Works Director expertise about where's the best way to spend the money.
The, I think what we've done is, from a traffic flow perspective, I think we've probably optimized the conditions in that section of Holly Street as it relates to the existing right-of-way width, that being the constraint, the existing pavement width being the constraint.
The width of the intersection, yeah.
Right. So I think we've, I think we've pretty much optimized that from a traffic flow standpoint. So I see that there would be these additional things which could potentially make it less of a headache for the residents who live along Holly Street to continue to have the parking restrictions in place and the traffic flowing in the way that it is. So I do think there's some benefit in these smaller things to, from a resident's standpoint. However, ultimately, in a big picture, my sense is that if Holly Street will remain the primary corridor from the freeway into the downtown area around El Camino, significant changes would need to be made, and that, we had talked, it's been about a year ago now when we had the presentations about the alternative that perhaps remove the homes on the south side of Holly and, and kind of realign the roadway to eliminate the residential connections, the driveway connections to that street, and then cul-de-sac the homes on the other side. So my sense is that until the council is going to be willing to pursue something of that magnitude, we probably don't have many other options. Now, one of the suggestions that was made to try to induce traffic over to adjacent interchanges, I think it's worth it, but practically speaking, unless you make a physical restriction, folks will default to their normal pattern, and visitors will realize, oh, Holly Street gets me to, to that location, so I'm going to take Holly Street. So there's some things we could try, but again, changing behavior is, is going to be tough in those situations unless it's a physical restriction.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to take up too much more time. I would just make the comment that we should have a further discussion, because the presentations about taking the houses away from Holly still say that there's a bottleneck at El Camino, and there's a bottleneck entering the 101, and so I still haven't sort of seen to my satisfaction the idea that if you widen the, the flow in the middle, but you don't widen the ends on the other side, that you've got a significant benefit for such a huge capital cost. But we should talk about it if you think otherwise. The last thing I wanted to say is if you do think that we're largely in sort of a mitigation kind of help improve life for the residents, are there specific projects in there that you think are the biggest bang for the buck? That would, that would accomplish that specific goal?
Well, I definitely want to be able to take a look in a little more detail on this, and, you know, as I said before, now that the lawsuit has been dismissed, I think we have the opportunity to, with your direction, to really spend some time on this. The one I think that, that really makes a lot of sense is to get the trucks, the large trucks off Holly Street, because that's not only a, we'll call it an inconvenience and a problem for residents along the street, but certainly for people who are driving alongside those trucks. There is that physical intimidation of that large vehicle adjacent to you, you don't know if they're coming over, you don't really know what they're going to do in an environment like that. So to me, that's one of the ones I think that would be really important to pursue, and I think that, that's, that's doable from that standpoint. And then again, I would like to continue to look at the, the traffic signal timing modifications and things like that to try to help incrementally improve those areas. I think the Bicycle Boulevard on East San Carlos Avenue, we want to do more to emphasize pedestrians and bikes over there to go east-west. So one of the things later on tonight in our traffic impact fee update, we've identified a traffic signal at Industrial and East San Carlos Avenue, which I think will be a tremendous benefit when we can fund and install that, to help get folks feeling confident they can get east-west and over to the freeway without having to worry about Holly Street and Industrial Road.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm not hearing parking lot widening aprons, widening sidewalks, things like that as high on your recommended list?
I don't, they're not high on my list necessarily, and, and again, we've more just looked at what it might cost to be able to do it.
Okay. All right, thanks, Jay.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. Just a few questions, Jay. Just one general comment, I've had an occasion to drive down Holly Street many times, and with regard to the traffic signalization, in my own personal experience, it's just a matter of timing. No pun intended. I mean, sometimes I make it all the way through, sometimes I don't, and I've come down the same street just about the same time, on the same days of the week, so I don't know what tweaks would be made, I, you know, whatever they can do, great, but sometimes I think it just comes down to where you are in the traffic queue. Just a couple of things. You mentioned that restricting the large vehicles on Holly Street might, might really help, and I also have been next to those trucks, so I've experienced that. My question though is, if we restricted those, where, how would we, how would we do that, first of all, and where would those vehicles go?
As I understand that, it would have to be a local ordinance that would restrict vehicles of a certain size from the streets, that street in particular, in San Carlos. Mr. Rubens, if, if I've misstated?
That's correct, but we also, as part of that, we would need to study the impact because Holly Street is arterial, and, and there's some state law that relates to that, so, and our jurisdiction is limited sometimes in those cases.
And then what we also would have to do is we would have to, we'd have to partner with Belmont, because, especially in the southbound direction, I think that one of the, one of the more relatively easy exits to get up to El Camino on is Harbor. It's a, it's a good wide street, and it's got a good connection to El Camino. I think Britton Avenue would be impacted by that as well, but Britton's a good arterial, doesn't have residences along it, and so to a degree, I think, between those two streets, we would, we would be able to have those large trucks that would be able to get up to El Camino and then do their business, because some of them are destined for San Carlos, and so we definitely don't want them to be rerouted in such a way that they're, you know, they're going far, far longer distances just to get to the destination in San Carlos.
Would we also possibly need to talk to Redwood City about, you know, northbound traffic, or would they just get off at Holly and then they just go down Industrial?
Actually, I think it's, again, it probably would be good for us to do that, because as a truck is coming northbound, if they can get off in Whipple and, and have, let's say they have business in the southern end of the city, it might make more sense to do that. In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if some of them don't already do that now.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, they're probably already doing it. Okay, I think Cameron asked one of my questions, and I'm glad he did, because that'll just shorten my, my questions. There was a mention of, there was a cost of, I forget what it was, was it Holly Street and Laurel, and there's a cost of $200,000 for signalization. Isn't that already a, a traffic signal that's just flashing red all the time?
Problem is, it has no guts, so there's no detection, and there's no cabinet, and so.
No hardware there.
There's no, well, there's a flasher unit.
Right.
That basically flashes those lights, but at this point, that's been in the ground for so long, I know we would have to redo all the conduits for detection and the conductors to the signals and install a controller, and of course, then that has to be interconnected to the signal at El Camino. Caltrans has already indicated a willingness to take that on in terms of the interconnection to provide the timing that we need, but my sense was it'd probably be about that much to get that signal fully up and running.
So, and again, just your opinion, if we were to spend the money on that particular intersection, would it have much of an impact, you know, on eastbound Holly?
I think it gives us a little bit more, I'll say, room to tweak the timing at El Camino and Holly and Old County at Holly. When you have that on the receiving end, oftentimes, as you've experienced it, you'll have traffic crossing there, and pretty quickly it backs up to almost right back to the intersection. So if we can have that time so that traffic could be green going through Laurel, then I think it helps us with flow through the intersection.
Okay. And then with the, the way the parking restrictions hours are now, they're 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I pulled out the numbers from last summer that we looked at, and it seemed to me that you could make an argument that there's not much significant drop-off after 6:00 on the eastbound. And I, in fact, I had a resident that was talking to me about the westbound, because he, he says it's rather inconvenient sometimes, he gets, he's got to make sure he gets down that road by 6:00. And when I look at the, the times, there's actually more traffic at 7:00 than 6:00. So my question isn't necessarily changing both, but do you, would it be necessarily confusing if we were to leave? And again, this is just a hypothetical question. We left, we left the west, the eastbound hours alone, but extended the westbound hours to 7:00. And, you know, in fact, and when I looked at the numbers, I could even see 8:00 to 7:00 for westbound. In your experience with that, do you think that that variance of hours, parking restrictions in both directions on the same street would end up causing more confusion? Or what, is this something that maybe we ought to look at?
I don't believe it would necessarily cause more confusion. We would sign it appropriately. I think, I think one of the things that we've identified here are the, the signs that would be placed, as long as the parking restrictions are in place, and there are hours in the day when parking is allowed, we need to have good notification on either end for those cars that come into the, to that section of the street. So whether we went from 7:00 to 7:00 in the westbound direction, or left it at 7:00 to 6:00, I don't think that's necessarily confusing, because I think we have to get in place that notification that's better, more instant to the drivers as they approach there. Then I think that's important for the weekend hours and the overnight hours as well, so they don't encounter those parked cars. But I think the time itself is not particularly relevant to be the same on one side of the street and the other.
And I assume that signage would be in electronic in nature, or would it just be fixed signs?
My sense is the fixed signs are not working very well. They're not, they're not grabbing the attention and being easily understood, because we still have traffic that continues down through this section to the very last minute before they merge over when they see that there's actually a parked car there.
Okay. And I think Cameron asked you which were the ones that you would do now, which is, which is fine.
And Mr. Mayor?
The one thing that I had caught my, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, and actually, I'm glad you reminded me, because that is one that I think we really ought to do. That's a very important one to do, so that does rise up to, near the top of my list for ones we should pursue.
Okay.
The electronic signs, and that, those that are activated time of day so that there's that good message there. So I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's okay, which also led me to think of something else in, as far as what might be doable. I realize that we really can't change speed limits without a, without a traffic study, but you think that it, assuming the traffic study confirmed it, it would, it makes sense to reduce the speed to 25 miles an hour?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Again, it's, it's, it's all about the, the measurements, the data that's collected. We will be in consultation with Sheriff's Office to talk about this. The factors along the roadway all could lead to that.
Okay. And my, and my last, my last point was that it seemed to me that, you talked about removing the homes on the south side of Holly. It seems that that probably wouldn't make much sense at all, as Cameron alluded to, unless you had already completed the Holly 101 interchange improvements, because those, as I think we found out at earlier meetings, really were accounting for some of that backup, because the, the traffic, once it crossed Because the traffic, once it crossed Industrial, was having a difficult time getting on the freeway, getting off the freeway, that sort of thing. So, that, given that that's not going to happen for, what, four or five years, that would push that discussion off to some future council, I would assume.
But good. Actually, I think the, I'm a bit more optimistic on the construction for the Holly interchange project. We should have our environmental approval in June, and we'll seek the approval from the Transportation Authority to begin using our design money. And the consultant has about a one-year design schedule to complete the plans. And then, at that point, we probably have about four to six months for the Caltrans process to advertise and actually get the construction underway. So, I'm feeling pretty optimistic that that's going to be sooner rather than later.
All right. Good to hear. Thank you. Okay. We do have some people who would like to speak on this issue. Peter Blanusa, are you here, Peter? Come on up.
Hello. How, councilmembers? How are you? I just want to confirm the receipt of the email that I sent on April 5th to all of you. It was part of our sort of email democracy, where everybody was pitching in with ideas, and we submitted that to you, so just wanted that for the record. And thank you for including a lot of these comments into the, your list here. So, as a general comment, I really want to say that I think you have a very strange approach into mitigation measures. You're, on one hand, trying to increase the traffic flow, and then, on the other hand, you're trying to decrease. So, the mistake is doing any measure that is trying to increase the traffic through Holly. You have some fantastic measures, like couplets, and other ideas of closing off the southbound flow into the Holly, because those are decreasing traffic. Our problem on Holly is the volume and increase of traffic. That, you have to prioritize the safety, both of pedestrians and the residents coming in and out of driveways. So, if you're looking at a priority list, priority list is really safety list. So, whatever is increasing the safety of the residents, and the drivers, and the pedestrians, that should be on your priority list. You know, studying for another year, traffic counts will give us whatever it gives us. It doesn't matter. We need to be safe where we live, and where we walk. And you are driving there, you need to be safe as well. So, you're not doing a pollution, particle increase study with the volume of traffic you're trying, so I think that's an important aspect also, from the safety. Parking permits, online easiness, I have pleaded, because I was part of this parking needs, to get my-
Just to get around.
Yeah. So, I also will allude you to include that, expediting parking permits issuance, and definitely look at this, any measure to decrease the traffic as your priority.
Thank you. Okay. Next is, is it Mary Wenz?
Oh, man.
Did I mispronounce your name?
Burns.
Burns, I'm sorry.
It's my scribble. Hi.
Mary Burns.
Mary Burns. I'm a 13-year resident of Holly Street. I live at the house right next to the 76 station. And I moved there knowing what I was getting into. It's not like I moved in next to the airport and said, "Oh, I hate the damn planes." I knew exactly what Holly Street was. And my issue with the way it's gone about is this. Also, I'm, I was an 18-year veteran of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. I was a correction officer for 18 years. So, I'm vastly disappointed in the amount of law enforcement we've had on our street. Yes, maybe sometimes you make it from Old County to Industrial, but you're going 50 miles an hour if you make it. And I sit out in my front yard, and I can sit and tell you that at least 20 cars every hour are going at least 50 miles an hour down our street. And then, I also have a 30 mile an hour sign right in front of my house. That sign has, on two occasions, been flipped the wrong way, because it's getting clipped by trucks as they go by. I take care of two seven-year-old girls at my house quite a bit, and we walk all the time. And I have to have them walk up the driveways and on people's lawns, because I don't want them on the sidewalk. Because these trucks are not going 30 miles an hour. They're going faster than 30 miles an hour. We have the big Eddie Bauer buses going down the street, going more than 30 miles an hour. I don't mind 30, 35, because, trust me, when I'm on the freeway, I'm not going 65. But on a residential street, they must be going 30 miles an hour, and not a mile over, because it's not safe. Go up and down my street, and look at all the black markings you have on the curbs. That is from cars striking our curbs, as they're going too fast up our street. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mary. All right. Next, we have Priya Joseph.
Hello. I'm glad to see we have a traffic study finally, because I've made public record requests for traffic studies in 2014, March and May, and the previous year, and I haven't heard back yet, although I had, you know, conversations with them. So, I would like more transparency on sort of the cost-benefit analysis. Are you looking long-term, right, for each of those options that he listed, right? If you took something, you know, what do you see long-term, right? Think long, right? I would like some insight into that. How do you think long? A lot of people have already talked about public safety. We're really sitting on a time bomb. There's not enough space to have four lanes. It's, if you look at, you know, definitions of what constitutes one lane in an arterial street, it's like nine to 12 feet. And there isn't enough. So, there's no headroom when you walk. It's really, you know, it's a matter of time before you have fatalities on each one of your heads. So, I would like you to think really hard about that.
Thank you, Priya. Our next, we have Holly Jones.
Hi there. I also live on Holly Street, and my name's Holly. Everybody laughs, but that's okay. So, anyways, I live just a couple doors down from Mary, and I'm on the north side of the street. And I'm, I don't know, there's so many different things, I'm like, what do I talk about? I guess one major thing for me is, I guess, the speed limit. That's, it's insane how many cars go flying by, and how few police officers I've seen. I actually saw one sitting at the police, at the gas station this last week, and I want to say it's probably the only one I've seen sitting. Most of them are like, you know, in a hot pursuit of something other than what was happening on Holly Street. So, there really isn't policing on Holly Street. And I don't know, it would mean a lot to me, because I've got a two-year-old, and I'm so nervous every time we get out of the car, or into the car, because I can't put a gate over my driveway. I've got a gate in my front yard, but that's how that goes. So, I've got, I'm curious, and I don't know, I would just want, so want to push for there to be more policing on the street, and just get people to slow down. Anytime, I mean, I know, I go a little driver, you know, faster than the speed limit's supposed to be sometimes, too, myself, I'm a normal person. But, I don't know, just right there, it's gnarly. And I see up and down constantly, even like illegal U-turns. I don't know. I encourage people to even, like, park in front of my driveway, and watch it. I mean, take your time, relax, and see it. It's insane. Anyways, another part of it, that I was really happy that the gentleman here had mentioned about making it more obvious for people to know what's going on with the lanes changing. Because I happen to have the first parking space right in front of my house, and that's where everybody honks on their horns, because they either think that this guy's parked, or they're honking on their horn, because this guy just jumped in front of him, because they want to avoid the parked car. So, that is crazy, because when I have my windows open, and the horns are just all day-long on the weekends. So, that's that. And then, also thinking about on the sidewalk, when I was walking with my husband to go downtown. And it's scary, I know, I'm trying to, it's scary thinking, because all of a sudden, you're on the side of the sidewalk, and cars are flying past you. So, it's pretty terrifying out there. But anyways, that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Thank you, Holly. Next, we have Eduardo Semperio.
Definitely, I'm glad that the study has been made. I thought that the study was going to be presented tonight, I didn't see it. I've been trying to go online, and it's not available. The study that we had last time, when the lanes were implemented, the four lanes were implemented, did not call for the need on the westbound to have the limitations on the traffic between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. The traffic was on the east side. The west side is where we park overnight, but we need to move our cars before 7:00 a.m. So, around 6:00 something, we need to move it and park it on the lawn, or park it at the 7-Eleven. I would like, encourage the, look at the studies. Now, we saw that the previous studies didn't require that. This way, we will be able to actually use the parking overnight. I'm not asking for during the day. I'm going to leave that on the side. But I truly believe that's a need. I also want to emphasize what my neighbors are saying about the speed. I mean, you guys drive through that, you know. The cars, I'm glad that we are looking at moving the trucks. That's like a common sense. The signalization, the lights, I think is great. And the light synchronization on the, on the lights, another no-brainer. So, thank you very much for getting that. And the safety, you know, I'm walking on the sidewalk, I'm putting the trash cans, and I'm trying to pull the trash cans into the sidewalk, because they're going to hit it. But then, I'm blocking the pedestrians, the space. I see, my neighbor across the street is an elderly man. He is not allowed to walk on Holly Street anymore, because the speed and the cars are too close to the sidewalk. His name is Art, and he lives across the street from my house. So, I encourage you to see what we can do on the parking in the morning, when it's not needed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Eduardo. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? Come on up. You can fill out a card after you're done.
Hi there. So, my name's Rita Fusaro, and I also live on Holly Street. And I liked hearing what everybody was saying. I like, in general, just the idea of safety. You know, pedestrian safety, and just safety to anybody that's using Holly Street. I don't know why, everybody wants to come down Holly Street. I mean, they want to walk down it, they want to bike down it, they just want to be down it. And so, it's nice to see the council try to consider some options for making it safe. And although I don't have any great ideas myself, I often walk around the neighborhood and with my new little dog. And I love the fact that some of these other streets have this nice little border, little planter strip between the sidewalk and the, and the street. Now, I know we don't have the real estate for that, but if we did, that would really, really be nice. That would really add like, an automatic safety zone, and some nice aesthetics. And I know there's a lot involved there, but, and it may, may not have much popularity, but it's something to consider. There's, there's options for win-wins. And so, I like public safety being, you know, the number-one thing, so, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Let's see. Mark, you wanted to, you had a comment?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually wanted to move to sharing my perspective on what we ought to task the Traffic and Circulation Commission and staff with implementing, or, you know, looking to see if we can implement. And I'd like to echo a comment that was made by several of the speakers, as I was listening to the presentation, and thinking about conversations I've had with Jay over the last few months. At this juncture, for me, the main focus ought to be on improving safety for the residents on Holly Street, and I'll say, improving convenience as well, because there's one item I want to, or reducing inconvenience is probably a better way of looking at it. Because there's one item there that I'd like to include. So, if I can go down my list of things? I actually, I think it was Peter Blanusa who mentioned about trying to streamline the parking permit process. I think that'd be a great idea. It's consistent with our long-term effort to try and make as many city services available online as we can. Not quite sure how that works, but that'd be something I'd task staff with. Reducing the speed limit, absolutely something that I support. Better signage, to Jay's point, that's also something I support. I do actually believe that that's improving the safety for people on Holly Street, the residents there as well, because as a couple of people noticed, you know, either because of honking horns in front of houses, or near misses on parked cars, it actually would be to their benefit, as well as to the benefit of drivers elsewhere in San Carlos. Restricting large vehicles, I'm fine with that, too. I brought up the issue of the garbage can service. That may or may not, I know one of the speakers echoed that as well, that may or may not be a broadly felt need for residents on Holly Street, but I'm certainly willing to have that considered. I would actually probably down, de-emphasize, for this point in time, additional work on the traffic light synchronizations. And I wouldn't, it's not that I would say, "Don't do them," but I'd say, "Put those back in the hopper for similar types of things that we look at throughout all of San Carlos. And if it reaches the appropriate threshold, bring it forward. If not, then, then leave it alone." Widening driveway aprons, I think that that's, that's the one area where I said, reducing inconvenience, I would definitely like that to be considered. The, let's see, I think, I think, I think that's it. And, you know, it's not that some of the other ideas don't also have merit, I think a number of them do. It's just that, in terms of what we can do reasonably quickly, and not totally savage the budget, those are the things that I would like to see staff and the commission work on. And my closing comment on this, too, by the way, is there are a number of things here. Personally, since it's been a while, since we made this change, and we had the delay introduced by the lawsuit, if there was a way for this to be managed, so that we didn't necessarily wait, to have to wait for all of these things to be considered, sort of bring them forward piecemeal, as they get worked through, I'd be actually, I'd prefer to see that. Because I'd like to see making some changes as quickly as we can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Matt, do you have a list?
I do. I just have a comment, I hope you'll bear with me. When Rita was speaking, especially, this thought came to my mind, that, you know, really what we've got here is something that's very similar to what they have at the San Francisco-Marin County line, which is, of course, the Golden Gate Bridge. It's very similar, where you're trying to deal with in-and-out traffic at certain hours, people speeding. And what really made me think of that, Rita, was when you talked about walking the sidewalks, and there's no barrier. At least, you have that on the Golden Gate Bridge. You've got a metal railing to protect you. And it almost just, in jest, made me think, maybe we should build a Golden Gate structure, looks like the bridge, at Holly Street, and get something out of this that's sort of a, you know, a benefit. Put us on the map, anyways.
And bring more traffic to Holly.
Yeah, exactly. I hadn't thought about that. Yeah. Toll bridge, toll booth. But seriously, I've got my, I call it, you know, three yards and a, you know, cloud of dust plays, and then my one, you know, long ball play. To stick with what somebody else said, I think about, you know, said, thinking about the safety issues, I think it was Peter here, talked about that, and then somebody else talked about, you got to look at this also, long-term, and big picture. So, my three short yardage plays are better signage, and even possibly striping, something that's on the roadway, that shows you, you're entering a choke point. Number two is the reduced speed, and I would reiterate that I think we should expand that to be a T shape, instead of just Holly Street, and looking at Holly plus that first, I don't know what it is, half-mile either direction on Old County. And then, the third one is to limit truck and large-vehicle traffic, whatever we can do to do that, and as soon as we can do it. My long ball play, or, you know, Hail Mary, let's try and get a touchdown here, is to look at the Britton Avenue Full Exchange, or, I've never thought of this before, it's on the list here, but Harbor. And actually, thinking about it, I think maybe we'd have a better chance, possibly, with Harbor, because we could work with Belmont, possibly. And, and I think an approach to whoever's in charge of that, the state, is kind of go to them like you do when you're in sales, and you say, "Would you like to meet with me on Tuesday, or Wednesday?" And the person says, "Well, I'll have a Wednesday," you know? And so, you go to the state, and you say, "Would you like us to do a full exchange at Harbor or Britton?" See what they say. So, those are my thoughts.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going to sound like a broken record, but my colleagues have mentioned it. I think speed, I think the 25 is something that we certainly should look at, and hopefully can be, as Mr. Olbert said, to have some of these perhaps be able to, I don't know I think speed, I think the 25 is something that we certainly should look at, and hopefully can be, as Mr. Olbert said, to have some of these perhaps be able to, I don't know if everything we talk about has to go to TNC or not, that's, you know, procedure and process that you folks have to work out. But the speed limit, the large vehicles, I agree with the folks that have talked about that before. I've been next to them, as all of us have, and it is a little bit intimidating when they're there, especially when they come over. Third is the signage. One thing that, you know, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned about Holly and Laurel. From, not, I don't know, maybe this is called anecdotal, but I get down there around eight o'clock in the morning a lot when I'm going over, in other words, I'm going to go east, and I'm on El Camino Real. There are a lot of people that don't come down San Carlos Avenue to go on Holly. They cut over, and they come down Holly. And if there's a street light that's going to go all the time, I think you're going to have a backup on San Carlos Avenue, and you're going to have another, but the other thing is, too, is coming across, like later in the day, if you have a stoplight, I've seen cars now block the El Camino Real. And if that's a stoplight, there's no way that car can move. So, I'm just anecdotally on that one, I'm not sure. I think that flashing might, again, the traffic experts will tell us, but I'm not sure about that one. Let's see, what was the other thing I had here? Can't remember my own writing. It's wonderful. You know, Mr. Grocott mentioned about a railing, and those of us that are old enough to remember, and I am, there was no railing on the Golden Gate Bridge to separate the cars from the walkway. There was no railing. And they put it up in the last 15 years, or 20 years, but it was no railing. I think it's great that they have it, because I'm surprised that some accidents didn't happen anyway, but there was no railing. But that's not necessarily a bad idea. I mean, you know, if we're not going to expand the sidewalk, again, the only issue we'd have, of course, is the garbage and how to figure out how to do that. But I don't necessarily, I thought that might not be a bad idea. And again, it might be cost-wise, but it might be some idea. Certainly, that would be a much safer situation. I finally read my writing here, my scribble, the driveways, if you widen the driveways, it might take away, I don't know, and again, I don't know all the length of it, it might take away some of the parking. So, again, that's an item, you, you know, the, what is it, the law of unintended consequences? So, I just want to throw that out there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Just to clarify, you're not so sure about the driveway widening, you're not necessarily thinking of widening the width?
Not so sure about the Holly, not that I'm denigrating your comment, but I don't think that Holly Laurel thing, that's going to, somebody's got to prove to me on a big study that that's going to work better if you put a traffic signal there.
Actually, that's why I asked the question.
But the first three, but the first three, speed, signs, and large vehicles.
Yep. Okay, got it. Cameron?
So, I agree with my colleagues. I wrote down signs, trucks, and speed limit. So, I think those are the place to start. I am also just interested to see what the study comes back in in August and see where we're at. And, you know, as I said, the status quo before this was, there was no parking during rush hour, but you could park during the middle of the day. I thought it was pretty onerous to take away parking during the middle of the day. And so, if we can't show that it's actually had a positive impact on traffic, I don't see why we would continue to sort of punish the residents if we're not getting the benefit out of it. So, I'm interested to see where that lands. But for the short term, if we assume that this is the status quo moving forward, signs definitely, I think it's hazardous the way it is. And trucks and speed limit, I think, will help incrementally.
Great. Thanks. Mark?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to potentially amend what I had said. I don't remember if I said that I also supported looking into blocking large vehicles on the road. If I did not, I meant to include that as well.
Yeah, you said it, your fourth item.
Okay, that's fine. And then, the other comment I wanted to make is, since some of these things, at least, I believe we're going to go back through the Transportation and Circulation Commission, I would also encourage them, if they come up with some other creative thoughts, to, you know, consider those as well.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I agree with everything everybody said. I also, a couple of things Mark said that people, other people didn't touch on, but I'd love to see us look at it, is the whole garbage can issue. There may only be a handful of residents that want that, and that might, you know, it might not be that expensive to help them out with that, so maybe we could look at that, too. And I also agree with Mark's comment on the incremental implementation. And really, the only thing that, the only comment I would make, other than the Golden Gate Bridge structure, which I thought was really interesting, Matt, was I, because I've heard it brought up so many times, I don't want people to get too excited about this harbor and Britton Avenue Full Exchange idea, because they're, first of all, Caltrans has restrictions against putting full interchanges within a mile of another interchange, you've got wetlands out there, you've got lots of different agencies to deal with. That's the only one that would really be a difficult issue. And Matt, I realize you did say, "Long-term, long-range, long-range plans." So, well, it sounds like we've got some consensus, Jay, you've got your marching orders. And I would just say to the people who live on Holly Street, have some patience with us, some of these things are going to take a while, but we're going to get to them, and the things that we can do first, we'll do, and as they move along, we'll make them happen. So, thank you all. Okay. We didn't mean to motion or anything on that, did we? It was just a report. Okay. Now, we're going to go back to Item 9B, receive a presentation outlining the impacts of the new municipal regional stormwater permit. And Mr. Walter is back for a second appearance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, again, members of the City Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And probably you've heard by now that the Regional Water Quality Control Board has designs on a new permit, and that's the, what we call the new municipal regional stormwater permit. And so, tonight, we wanted to give you an indication of what that may be like, what we're seeing in the draft permit, and some of the things that we feel are going to impact us in San Carlos in some very serious ways. And there will be some financial implications, and so, we want to kind of walk through that with you at this point, and then give you a sense of where we're going and what's likely to happen in terms of the timing for the board to adopt this new permit. So, to give you some background, the city of San Carlos is part of the San Mateo Countywide Water Pollution Prevention Program, which means that all the cities within the county and the county are essentially jointly permitted. And we also are tied to other counties within the Bay Area, and that's what this municipal regional permit is all about. So, we've been working over the past five years of the old permit. We share responsibility for the permit implementation and all the things that happened, all the requirements that are part of that. So, there are many cities, counties, sanitation districts, and others that are also involved in this and have various requirements that they have to implement from an operational standpoint, as well as from a planning standpoint and from a maintenance standpoint. So, that's the background. So, we're continuing to be joined at the hip, as it were, on stormwater requirements and working together. And it's, actually, there's an advantage to having the resources of a countywide agency that is able to do some of the work that small cities like us may not be able to do very well, except at a much higher cost. So, that's sort of our background for where we are with stormwater permitting at this moment in time. So, this first permit, which we call MRP 1.0, the requirements to address water quality and flow-related impacts of the stormwater runoff. As you know, all of our stormwater flows downhill to the bay, and so, there are definitely water quality-related impacts to that stormwater flow from roadways that drain because of all the oils and sediments, grease, and other kinds of things that you find on the roadways. And then, properties also drain to the streets as well, and then run off to those storm drain inlets, they all reach the bay. So, through the various creeks and culverts, they all end up in the bay. And the primary responsibility from a permit standpoint is to reduce the impacts of that stormwater runoff into the bay. So, the, as I mentioned a little bit, the activities that are related to construction and new construction, that is both on private and public property, the fact that there are occasionally illegal discharges to the storm drain system of materials that should not be dumped down the storm drain, the small little symbol on the left side of the screen, as you see it there, no dumping drains to the ocean. You typically see those types of markers on all the storm drain inlets around the city and around the county, too, because we want to make sure people realize when they dump there, it drains to the bay or drains to the ocean, and they shouldn't be dumping there. And one last piece is it relates to municipal operations. The city, as the owner-operator of a corporation yard, as well as other city facilities, we need to have, we need to fulfill certain requirements as well to reduce the amount of pollution and runoff from those facilities. So, tonight, I'd like to introduce you to, for the first time, to present to you, Grace Lee, our new city engineer. And Grace is going to go over some of the new requirements that we're seeing with the, what we're affectionately calling MRP 2.0, the new version of the municipal regional permit. So, I'll ask Grace to come up to the podium and continue the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Grace Lee, city engineer, here to present the impacts of the new MRP, MRP 2.0. The current MRP that we're operating under was, is actually expired, and it was expired in November of 2014. Currently, the draft MRP 2.0, the new permit, is being circulated for comments, and there's been a lot of back and forth with the regional board, comments, questions, requests for clarification, and not a whole lot of answer back. So, we know what the requirements are, at least, we know what the big topics are, but the details are still, hopefully, forthcoming. So, right now, what we're presenting to you is what we know so far, and the cost impacts are orders of magnitude of what staff is interpreting from the requirements of the MRP 2.0, of what we know so far. And despite the lengthy dialogue back and forth with the water board, the water board is still anticipating adopting MRP 2.0 by fall of 2015. So, several impacts, several significant impacts, and one of the, by far, the most significant impacts of MRP 2.0 is the requirement for the green infrastructure plan, and the development of it needs to be completed by June of 2016. This is a plan to comprehensively look at areas where we know has high pollutant concentrations, and to implement green elements such as what you see here, bioswales, permious pavers, just green elements that would, the goal is to help reduce the pollutant into our stormwater system and improve water quality. So, staff's interpretation of this requirement is, for the first year, we'll be developing the plan, and subsequent years, we'll have to implement projects such as the Branston Green Street project that we did recently with grant funding. We'll have to develop this, implement these projects through our, in conjunction with our CIP, so that'd be, the impacts to us is basically another plan and project implementations for the following years. Another significant element, and this was a big impact from the original MRP, is the trash load reduction. We, council already approved a long-range trash load reduction plan in 2014, and that included installation of several of these trash-captured devices. In the new MRP 2.0, we're definitely going to see an increased requirement for load, trash load reduction, and which translates to more installation of these inlet trash-captured devices, and increased staff maintenance costs, as well as we need to do some increased on-land cleanups to prevent trash from entering our stormwater system. PCBs was also a big component of the original MRP and continues to be a big impact in MRP 2.0. We have known areas in the city where there are high concentrations of PCBs, and for this new round, the board has newly identified sources of PCBs, and they're saying that PCBs are found in pavement sealants and building caulking materials. And the requirement is for us to come up with a mitigation and abatement plan for those, and that can, that, the pavement sealant item especially, can increase our roadway management projects, if we were having to come up with a mitigation plan to handle the pavement material that comes out of the projects. Staff's recommendation for this item to help reduce PCBs is to enhance, perhaps, enhance our sweet sweeping program, and that is to include parking restrictions in area where we know there are high concentrations of PCBs, such as the industrial areas. This will require, you know, increased staff efforts to restrict parking, as well as increase the sweet sweeping efforts. With all these new requirements, there always comes a tracking reporting component, and that has been really, a really big component in MRP 1.0, and it continues to be a significant component in MRP 2.0, especially with the green infrastructure plan will have to be coordinated seamlessly with our CIP projects, milestones that we have to meet. So, for this, staff is proposing, in the new budget cycle, you'll be seeing that there's a proposal for a new civil engineering assistant position, and the goal for this new civil engineering assistant, besides other engineering tasks, is to be the point person for the city, to fully understand the requirements of MRP 2.0, and to identify the impacts to the city, to track deadlines, to meet milestones, and to, like the green infrastructure plan, seamlessly integrate it with our current capital improvement program and our various maintenance programs. Annually, there's an annual report that requires significant staff effort to put together, and it requires efforts from different city departments, planning, building, maintenance folks, and so, this person will be charged with gathering the different datas and submitting the annual report. For this proposed new position, we, Public Works is actually doing, able to do a reorganization of the department, so there would be no new funding needed to have this new position. What Public Works is proposing is there's two vacant superintendent positions that we can underfill with three new positions, and one of them would be the civil engineering assistant. And you'll be seeing that coming through when we, for, when we talk about the budget. And again, reminder that this is just some magnitude of cost, and at this point, there's just so many unknowns, so many details missing that it would be hard to grasp the actual cost, but we wanted to be able to present you with some of our estimates to date. And the first item is the green infrastructure plan development. There would be a one-time cost of developing the plan, estimated at $500,000 annually to implement the green infrastructure plan, there'd be about, and we're expecting implementing a Branston Street-type project, a size-type project, and that would be around $500,000 annual cost. Trash load reduction, that would include installing more trash-captured devices, maintenance of trash cleanup, and that's estimated at $120,000. PCB load reduction, that's the, what I've talked about, about enhancing street sweeping with parking restrictions, and that'd be about $50,000. The inspection and tracking, and that's not including the new civil assistant, because that would be just through a reorganization of the department. So, this is really just the effort of putting, tracking all the requirements and reporting on them, and increase inspection, and that's about $50,000. So, we're looking at annually more than $700,000 of cost, additional cost impact to the city because of the new requirements of MRP 2.0. At this point, I'll turn it back over to Jay to talk about next steps.
Thanks, Grace, for that information. And again, so, council understands the requirements at this point, still in the draft stage, so we have a lot more information that we'll need to learn before we're fully sure of what's going to be happening. We do have the opportunity to provide comments, and so, as this draft report is available for public review and agency review and comment, the countywide program is essentially taking all those comments and providing that to the water board. The public draft is going to be available in the summer of 2015, so we've been seeing sort of an advanced copy of this thing. And again, as Grace mentioned, the adoption will be tentatively in the fall of 2015. So, there's still lots of time, still lots of moving parts in this, but we feel like we have identified what we've considered to be the most significant cost impacts to the city. It's possible it could be more. One example, the green infrastructure implementation. implementation. We see that as probably at least a project every year, to install those types of facilities to help us filter and trap some of the pollutants from the stormwater runoff. So again, it could be more, but we're trying to give you an idea at this point what we, what we foresee it to be. And as we get more information on the permit, and the draft becomes a final, and the Board issues the MRP 2.0, we will definitely be back to have the Council consider options at the 2016-18 budget, which is likely to begin next spring. If, and if we have significant extra costs, we'll certainly identify them for you along the way. So that kind of covers the, the update and report to you on where we are with that. And certainly, if you have questions now, Grace and I would be able to answer those, or we'll, we'll be back at some point in the future to give you another update.
All right. Thanks, Jay, and thank you, Grace, and welcome. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Keep forgetting to press the button. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Grace and Jay. Just two questions. One, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness involved with thinking about restructuring positions in the department to meet the need for the proposed new civil engineering assistant. But my question about that is, is this, this somehow feels to me like a relatively short-term assignment, because it's related to the permitting process, which only comes every few years. So I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't look to fulfill that very real need through consulting arrangement, basically.
That's a, that's a good question. And one of the, one of the reasons that we considered going in this direction is that because the, the municipal regional permit is, it's more than just the Public Works folks. So there is a, there's a group within the city departments that continue to work on various aspects of the permit, and the requirements, and everything that goes along with it. So we felt that we'd be well-served by a city employee who has that vested interest, that is, a part of the organization, develops the relationships with folks in the other part of the organization, and with the folks that are involved from the countywide program, to kind of give us some stability in this going forward. We do see it as really an ongoing effort. There's going to be quite a bit more that is going to be required on an ongoing basis. And at least from a monitoring, tracking standpoint, we know we'd have one person who we could point to that would be keeping all of those in line. We've had a little difficulty with the first permit, making sure that staff was keeping up with the responsibilities, providing the information that they needed to, in order for it to go into the annual report. So this is one of the ways we feel like we can make a better, we can do a better job at that.
I see. In other words, my observation that, that it's sort of tied to the permitting process is actually only part of the picture. There's the implementation and ongoing compliance with whatever permit comes out the other end of the process.
Yes.
Okay. Second question I had is, I am curious about whether or not you're foreseeing, let me call it, a larger need for environmental remediation on the east side in this, this next round of permit cycle because of the hotspots that have been well-documented, that exist because of our, you know, decades ago industrial operations that were on the east side of San Carlos. And the reason I ask that is because, as I recall from a presentation that I sat in, Jeff, when was that? That was last summer, right? When the, somebody from CCAG, County City Association of Governments, came to talk to us. I mean, they were talking, I had some quibbles with the way they monetized the numbers, but they were talking about millions of dollars a year, which, you know, is a significant chunk of change. So, like your perspective on that.
So one of the things that, that Grace mentioned, as, as far as new requirements for PCBs, and the, the accounting and removal of those from the stormwater runoff, has to do with what they're, what they say their science now supports is, significant amounts of PCBs in the caulking and sealants that were used in buildings that were constructed in the seventies, seventies, eighties, and all those timeframes, and even some earlier, that upon the demolition of those buildings, that material gets released. So there's a, it's the dust factor, it's the, the other materials that gets hauled off, and that stuff is residual, it's left on the ground, and it then will continue to be, say, tracked out into the streets and other kinds of things. And, and so they expect that there will need to be these mitigation and abatement procedures developed, so that anybody who's going to be demolishing a building is going to have to take that into consideration, to protect, to make sure that those aren't released as part of the demolition process. But the underlying concern is the PCB contamination on the properties themselves. So we see that as something the Board is going to take a much stronger position on when redevelopment occurs, that those things will actually have to be taken care of at that time. So we sort of end up being the tail end with runoff to the streets, to the storm drains. We're having to take care of it as it, as it reaches us, and that's the practical way we can do it. The next step, of course, is the private property-type cleanups.
Okay, I think I understand. I, I may want to take some time offline to meet with you and/or Grace, just to talk about this a little bit more, because I, it's been an issue I've brought up a number of times from, from the dais, and it just, it sounds like we may be having higher requirements associated with this new round of permitting, not only for the, for the newly identified sources, but also for the things that are, have been known about for years.
That's correct.
So, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Cameron?
Yes. Thanks, Jay. Thanks, Grace, for the presentation. Just a quick note I wanted to say about just kind of the tone of the conversation, and it's just a comment, which is, I appreciate the sort of straightforward information, but I think sometimes we lose sight about, you know, why we're doing these things, and it tends to come across sometimes as, this is another state unfunded mandate, and, you know, this is going to have negative fiscal impacts on the city. That may be the case. I do think that if you were to ask residents in San Carlos, do they want to improve clean water, they would say yes. If they want, you know, streets that are, you know, forward-looking, should we, should our community be a leader in kind of clean water policies? I think everything that is being suggested would be quite popular. And so I want to make sure that we're not losing sight of that when we're presenting these things, and that, yes, they are expensive, but there's, there's a, there's a reason behind them, and it's, and I just, I want to make sure that's not lost.
Point taken, and I should have probably removed my Public Works Director hat before making the presentation, so.
All right. Matt?
I had a question about the, first off, I think that's Grace's first time presenting to Council. Very good job. You did a very nice job on that. And during her presentation, she talked about the Green Infrastructure Plan implementation, and there's been some, you know, banter back and forth about that. I'm looking at that, and I'm looking at next steps, and you talk about staff continues to meet in various committees to provide comments on a draft MRP, and then there's an opportunity for public comment. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to get a comment across to those who are drafting this, and possibly we might want to take this position as a city, I don't know, we could discuss it, Mr. Mayor. But I would think the, the infrastructure plan implementation, rather than forcing a municipality to do a $500,000 project every year, which I would think comes out of our Fund 25 or capital improvement, is that right?
That's the logical spot for it.
That's the logical spot, okay. Rather than forcing us to do that, or any other city, having it be more like what, you know, what I experienced with my clients, and, you know, like with Chris's department, you come in and you're, you know, you're doing a remodel, and, and we all know, you know, these things have changed over the years, the different unfunded mandates on homeowners, of things like, okay, you're, you're doing a house remodel, now you have to change out all the toilets to low-flow, the new low-flow, or whatever. So that the, in other words, what I'm saying is, that it be something that, if we're doing a project, if we're going to redo industrial road again, if we're going to redo Old County, or San Carlos Avenue, or something, that that's the time we're required to do the infrastructure, where we, we put in the drainage and, you know, the new green things and so forth. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, maybe we should discuss that as a council? That, that would be my feeling on it, that it should not be something you're forced to spend $500,000 on every year, but rather be something that, when you're doing a project, that these mandates are included in the project.
Well, I guess you could suggest it as a future, you want to do that now, or you want to wait, or?
Here's what I'm suggesting, is that, can we, you know, these guys are going to be, as next steps, they're going to continue to meet in various committees to provide comments on the draft MRP. I take that to be to those who are author, authoring it.
That's right.
Right? So could we, as a city, through our staff, send that message, that when you come out with the draft, change this language from requiring that you do a project every year, to when you do a project, these, these things have to be included in it?
And actually, if I might comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the, the idea is that, that we would use projects as the opportunity to do that. So the fact that we have, for example, a street, a street reconstruction project every year, there's opportunity, when we do that work, to include these green infrastructure features. We do some storm drain projects, so we have the opportunity to include some of these when we do those projects.
It's an issue.
Well, what we'll have to do, though, is make sure that they're very carefully identified, so that the Regional Board knows that we did these projects during the term of the permit.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Is that?
Yeah, that clarifies it. Yeah.
Okay. Bob?
I just sparked a thing. If we're, if we're spending $720,000, what's San Francisco spending? What's Santa Fe spending? Must be multi-millions for these plant, for these plants.
I would agree.
Yeah. What happens if we don't do it?
We'll have a notice of violation issued, and subject to fines, the, kind of the standard process by which we would be identified as being out of compliance. So I, you know...
Do any cities ever do that? And then they just say, we're not doing, we don't, can't afford, not so much can't, won't do it, just can't do it?
You know, it's, it's...
And under the other permits that we've had? I'm not...
I guess actually what I'm, what I'm seeing and experiencing is that nobody's ever put their foot down and said, we just ain't going to do it because we can't.
Sure.
And, and so they would identify to the Board the, the extreme limitations that they would have in, in terms of achieving compliance, and they would hope to get some, say, variance from the Board, in order, maybe it's time that they can take longer to do it. But the Board has been very insistent that you are going to meet these requirements, and you're going to make the effort to do it.
I understand.
And they, they very clearly stated that the fact that your agency is not a big agency and doesn't have a lot of money, is not a reason for not, not trying to achieve compliance.
As opposed to some other things, let's say, in housing, sometimes it, the mayor's certainly, you know, when you have these housing goals and whatever, where there doesn't seem to be very many, much teeth, this one has a lot of teeth, apparently. Okay, thanks.
You could almost make the argument it's a public safety issue.
Well, it could be.
Yeah. Matt?
Okay.
Just a follow-up I thought of, as Bob was asking his question. Jay, you said, you know, we do a project every year. However, I can think of some of those, you know, I can think of a time, when I first came on the Council, we, we always chalked away about, I think it was about a million, and I think it was money we had gotten from the garbage. And also ERAF, when we got ERAF money, whatever we got, we would put some of that into the, into Fund 25. So every year, we had, you know, money to spend, and we could do projects. Then we went through some lean years, and we used that money for other things to get us through the lean years, and we didn't do the capital improvement projects. So I would, in, in some regards, I come back to my comment, because that's fine when things are good, but when things aren't good, and you're really stressed to do a project, and suddenly, you know, now you're forced to do a project and spend not just what you were going to do on that project, but you have to tack on, and this is current-day dollars, estimates, $500,000. So I come back to my comment, that I, I think if we could go to those who are drafting this and say, you know, make it a mandate when you do a project, but don't make it a mandate that you have to do a project every year. So...
I wanted to hear from Jeff. He had his light on, and I thought maybe he might be able to give us some, he might be able to enlighten us here.
Yeah, well, I actually turned my light on, Mr. Mayor, because I just wanted to add a comment to Bob's question. And that is, my understanding is, Baykeepers is also starting to tick off cities, literally and figuratively, on their list in regards to stormwater permits. So I think that's something that you'll see more and more of for cities that are not in compliance, or sort of on the edge of compliance with these permits as they go forward. And one other, just sort of general comment, because I do, in many ways, agree very much with what Councilman Regrocott is saying in terms of comments, you might want to sort of echo back in regards to the draft permit. One thing that I believe, I believe wholeheartedly in what Cameron said earlier, that I think people in, in this town very much pour at a clean bay and, and clean water, but I think it's a dangerous way to set public policy when you divorce the policy objective from the cost and resources associated with achieving that objective. Everybody wants clean water, but are they willing to pay for it? And at some point, the trade-off could be public safety and Parks and Recreation versus, you know, spending more and more on clean water, which is why, for many years, I've advocated to anybody that would listen, that at some point, the NPD stormwater permitting process that we have to raise revenue in our community really ought to be treated like a public utility. I mean, this is really a lot like the sewer system, that's what it's becoming, and that it ought to be something that's included into the 218 process, so that communities have the ability to raise fees, to pay for the level of clean water that is, is being mandated for, for us to help achieve.
Is that something that we can take the initiative on? Can, can we do something like that?
Well, you can certainly, you certainly cannot do it as a body, but you can certainly advocate for it in Sacramento as elected officials and representatives from the city of San Carlos.
And, Mr. Mayor, I might add that the, there actually is current legislation that's been sponsored that, that does categorize stormwater as, in, in a way that allows for the city to have, it's subject to 218, but it's more like your, your sewer fund and your, that enterprise fund, so that you have the ability, without the election of the, the general public, or property owners, to raise fees and have a majority protest vote as part of it. So it is something that's being sponsored, and there's lots of traction from local agencies to support that right now.
Okay. Mark, you had more questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just sparked by some of the, some of the discussion here. I actually endorse Jeff's comment that, over the long haul, given the direction that we're moving in treating stormwater runoff, it really, we really do need to start thinking of it as a utility. It's, it's, other than it doesn't always necessarily spend all of its time transiting through pipes, it really is no different than, than wastewater, effectively, in what we're doing. The comment I was going to make is, the Board that oversees this, it's, if the Council supported this, I mean, it seems to me like maybe we ought to be encouraging them to weigh in on this 218 aspect of things. Because if their goal is to see better compliance, then, you know, I don't know what political muscle they have, or, or what they amount to, but it might be something to ask them to consider taking up as well. I also just had a question. I presume that, when you told us that they have this requirement, that they want each agency to be doing a certain amount of work each year, is that because they're basically trying to play catch-up? They're basically saying there were a number, there, we've identified this as a problem with historical roots that is significant and wasn't addressed in history, and so therefore, we need to play catch-up, and so we, we have to do a certain amount of work, or is there some other reason?
I think that's a good characterization of it, because it's, it would be described as, for example, streets and roadways essentially allowing for that stormwater runoff to go into the storm drain inlets, into the pipes, and then into the creeks, without any type of treatment at all. So the idea that this green infrastructure would allow for some infiltration and filtering of that stormwater, capture of some of the sediments that hold the PCBs, before that water then runs on through into the creeks and into the bay, that's a way for them to begin to outfit the streets, to be better able to do that work. So, yes, catching up from all the years of, of just having straight old inlets into the, the pipes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none. Well, this is just a report, right? Nothing to do. Matt, you wanted to, go ahead. I would like to hear what you, your idea again, so we can figure out what to do.
So my idea is that the staff has down here is next steps, that staff continues to meet in various committees to provide comments. And if it would please... And if it would please the council, if we would consent to this, that we would ask staff in their comments to request that projects not be mandated every year, that you necessarily have to do a project every year, but simply that when you do a project, these mandates are included. And like Jay said, you know, right now, we're doing a, we're doing some kind of project where we could implement every year. But these are good, you know, fairly good times. We've got the money. I've been on this council when we haven't been in good times and we haven't had the money, where our CIP budget has dried up to, you know, where we did maybe $50,000 worth of work in a particular year, you know, fixing sidewalks someplace, but it was very minimal because we didn't have the money. And if we had to spend $500,000, and that's on top of whatever some project that we came up with in order to trigger this, we could be talking, you know, spending $750 to probably a million dollars in a year that we may not have that in our CIP budget. So that's my concern.
Okay. Any agreement, disagreement among my fellow council members?
I guess, my thought, I understand exactly what Matt's saying. My feeling is that if it were me, I would provide those comments in terms of, under the rubric of trying to get as much flexibility as we can for meeting the objectives, kind of echoing what Cameron said. I actually, I support the basic objectives as well, and I do think we have to play catch-up. Okay? And what that translates to into dollars and whether a commitment of X dollars minimum per year is the right way to do it, that I'm not sure. So I certainly support the idea of trying to get as much flexibility as we can, but on the other hand, I guess, to me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go to the mat on it, if you'll pardon the pun, which just occurred to me.
I was just going to say. Anybody else want to weigh in on this?
Well, you know, unfortunately, I don't disagree with you, but unfortunately, with Mr. Walter indicated earlier, that the board has never, in the past, been very open to, "We're poor this week." So I don't know that they're going to be, I mean, you can jostle a windmill, and I don't mind going on record, but I don't think it'd get, I've been to one of those board meetings. It's an absolute star chamber, trust me. And they do not seemingly listen to, I don't know, they have comments, but I'm not sure where they're going on this thing, but, so I don't know. I mean, again, it's not a lot of work perhaps to do this, but I'm not sure we're going to get very far. And again, as Mr. Malpe said, no matter what we do with the public agencies, the private folks like Bay Keepers are going to be all over all of this. So we could, the permit or the board could actually come in with a weaker one, and I would guarantee that somebody, the Bay Keepers should sit in there and file lawsuits saying it should be stronger. So it's just a very difficult area, so...
Well, it's an interesting idea, Matt. I'm not sensing support here.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item 10A, this is a public hearing, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing adjustments to the cost of services schedule, user fees for the fiscal year 2015 and 2016. Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the adoption of a resolution adjusting the city's cost of services fee In conjunction with the review of the budget, staff also reviews the cost of services schedule on an annual basis. A comprehensive overhead cost allocation and fee study was last done by an independent third-party consultant in the spring of 2013. Since conducting a comprehensive study is not an annual requirement, council adopted guidelines at that time that most fees would then be adjusted annually based on the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose urban wage earners, and clerical workers consumer price index. As of February 2015, the CPI index was 1.9%. Should council adopt the proposed fee schedule tonight, this will generate estimated additional revenue of $70,000. The new fee schedule would go into effect July 1st. A quick summary of the changes. Most fees, as I've mentioned, have been increased 1.9%, or the equivalent of CPI. We've added a new fee for the reservation of the Bocce Ball picnic area at $88 per event. We've proposed that the code violation fees be exempted from the annual increase to be consistent with the code enforcement fees listed in the drought ordinance. So the impact is very minimal on that. Instead of $102 for a first violation, it would be $100. And there's one fee that we've proposed to increase more than 2%, and that is the nonprofit gym rental. The proposed fee of $75 per hour is more in line with what other agencies charge. And there are no charges, no changes proposed for photocopying or return check fees. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions? I have one. The photocopying fee, is that set by law? In other words, we couldn't increase it to $3 a page if we wanted to?
For administrative purposes, we've left it at 25 cents a page. It's just easier to administer.
Okay.
Most things we do now, we send electronically.
Okay.
So we're not really charging that fee much anymore.
Lot of people involved. Okay. Cameron?
Thanks, Rebecca. I wanted, I exchanged emails with Chris Valli today, and I wanted to ask you guys and give my colleagues a chance to think about an amendment I may offer. So I asked Chris, what's the cost, what's the fee associated with installing solar panels? And whether that, and his answer was, it was $193 for residential and $280 for commercial. My question is, is that fee, I didn't see that fee explicitly broken out on the schedule, and is that planning to go up 1.9% as well?
Excuse me. The photovoltaic fee, fees are just flat fees. So they're representative of an average amount of time we spend on processing the permit, plan checking the permit, the inspections...
Got it.
...the re-inspections and so forth. And they're also in keeping with some state mandated guidelines with respect to permit fees, keeping the residential under 500 and the commercial fees under 1,000.
Got it.
So they're viewed in the industry as reasonable, all things considered.
And are they set to go up 1.9% as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
And I'll just close by saying, you know, I'd be considering offering amendment to waive the fee, and there is some precedence for this. We, last year, decided to waive the fee for block parties because we wanted to encourage more block parties, and that seemed to be a successful thing to do. So I would be interested if there are colleagues that would join me in waiving the solar panel fees in an effort to encourage more solar panel usage, and under the idea that it doesn't generate a huge amount of revenue for the city, and it's something that we're all focused on.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just actually had a follow-on question for either Chris or Rebecca regarding the solar panel fees. Are they, given your answer, do they, the level they're at now, do they fully cost-recover the effort expended?
It's somewhat of a token gesture, so to speak, where the fees are kept low because of the push on the states' end to keep the fees low.
Okay, well, that effectively, I think answers my question, because if I'm hearing you correctly, there's already essentially a subsidy baked into it at the current level.
To some degree, yes.
And we could certainly talk about whether we want more or less, but the point is, it's still got, it's got a subsidy in it right now.
Exactly. And just one other sidebar item I'd like to know is that the number of fees that we're issuing per year appear to be increasing. I mean, more and more people are getting solar, as you can kind of see around the communities, so. We average probably 75 to 100 permits per year, ballpark.
Okay. Then I'll just make the observation that I understand the motivation, Cameron, behind suggesting it. I actually do think that government has a role to play in early stages in sort of sparking stuff sometimes. I think, however, that we're not really at that early stage anymore, as regards panels. So I would, you know, wouldn't cause me to lose any sleep over it, but I would not be terribly supportive of that kind of amendment.
Okay. No other questions of Chris or Rebecca? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards on this issue, on this item, and I actually don't see any members in the general public.
Mayor, seeing the room, if no one wants to speak on this, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Do we need a roll for that, Crystal?
Yes.
Okay. Go for it.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Okay. So, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, there may be discussion, but I'll step up and make a motion to approve, read this right, introduce an ordinance, rather, adding Chapter 8.41 to the municipal code... Oh, I beg your pardon, wrong line. Sorry.
This is 10A.
10A. I'm already at 11. Gosh, I must have been Freudian. Oh, good, I get to read it. I never do these things right. I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash...
35.
35. A resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos authorizing adjustments to the cost of service, services schedule, user fees for fiscal year 2015-16. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Second. And Bob, gee, I thought with a piece of paper it would be easy.
I know, except I don't read well.
Oh, okay.
I loved mine. Okay. Now, discussion. Cameron?
So I'm sensing that there's not support for my amendment unless anyone wants to chime in, so. I do think, however, I'm interested in looking at ways that we can use our fee schedule to try and encourage behavior. I also talked to Chris about fees for new construction when people are taking water conservation measures and things like that. So I'm hoping, you know, the next time the fees come up, that we can look at other things that we can do to encourage the kind of behavior that we're looking for.
Okay. Matt?
Yeah, I just want to comment on two things. One, I've looked at this, you know, in years past, there's been times where these things have gone up quite a bit, and I've railed against it. So this time, I appreciate staff keeping these, you know, reasonable. I know the cost of living or whatever the index that you're using is pretty low, but, so I appreciate you staying in line with that. And the only other comment that I would also add is the same one I've added in years past. I don't know why we deal with pennies and nickels and dimes. If I had my way, you would eliminate all those, you would just round up all these. I noticed in a lot of these columns, you're looking at last year's fee of $72, you know, for something with the building department, for instance, Chris. And then, you know, you apply the percent increase and you end up with, you know, $73.14. Come on, drop the 14 cents. Because when you're, you know, just in terms of, really, of people doing work, I know I do this with my business. I do not deal with nickels and dimes in my business. And so, you know, when I'm at the end of the year doing my taxes or whatever, and you're dealing with crunching a lot of numbers, getting rid of those dimes and nickels and pennies really makes things a lot more simple, even though we got computers and editing machines and all that. It's just two less digits that you have to fuss around with, and when things come up and you're off and you're looking for that nickel or dime, come on, you know, just get rid of them and round up or down and call it a day. So, thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually, I don't, Matt, I don't recall you mentioning that last time we looked at this, and I apologize. I actually think that makes a fair amount of sense, so I'm just curious, is there some legal constraint where, I don't know, this has to be done based on cost or some analysis or whatnot? Because it certainly seems to make a lot of logical sense that we simplify everybody's life.
Well, the study that was done was designed, a few years back, was designed to calculate the cost for providing the services. So the cost of living increases are designed to make your current fees correspond with that study. You can charge less than the cost of service, you can't charge more. So if we were going to round, I think the idea would probably be to round down so you don't ever go above the actual cost of service, is that's the legal constraint that you have.
For what it's worth, for future reference, next time we look at this, I wouldn't mind if staff could cobble together something that indicates what it would cost to round down, taking into response what Greg has said and what Matt said. Because if we can make, you know, cut down on writers' crap, people writing checks, probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
Well, I'd just like to follow up with a question, and Rebecca or Chris, whoever can answer. Would rounding things off to just, you know, whole dollars have much of an impact? I mean, in terms of ease of doing your job, is really my question. Does it make things measurably easier for you?
It would probably make things a little easier. We wouldn't have to print as many digits, I guess. As far as the cost, I think it'd be pretty minimal.
Okay. All right. Might make our residents a little bit happier.
Most of our residents pay by credit card, although some do pay by cash.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other discussion?
Any vote?
I think we're ready. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Public hearing item number two, consideration of, 10B, by the way, consideration of adopting a resolution updating the traffic impact mitigation fees for the fiscal year 2015-2016, based on an estimated cost of $3,052 per PM peak hour trip to provide funding for the needed capital improvement program. This is your night.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. Tonight, in the audience, we have our, the consultant that prepared the report and did the analysis for the traffic impact fee update, and that's Mr. At Van Den Hout from Hexagon Transportation Consultants. And so if there are questions after the presentation, then he's available, probably for some more of the more technical things. And I'll move quickly through, given the hour that we have reached with my previous presentations. So the purpose of the study, obviously, is we have traffic impact fees so that we can capture funding to mitigate traffic impacts, to be able to put in the transportation improvements that are necessary to serve the expected growth within the city. So we look out at a long term. We look at general plan build-out for the number of trips that we are looking to try to mitigate for and provide projects and improvements for. So back in 2008, the city council adopted the initial ordinance for the traffic impact mitigation fee, and that fee was last updated in November of 2010. And why do we update the fee? We look at cumulative growth, and in the meantime, the city's general plan has identified areas where development is going to be generating more trips than what had been previously anticipated, and the mitigation project costs are increasing. So the projects that you'll see in the list as I go through are ones which, a couple of them were on the original list, but there's more, they're more expensive now. They have not been completed, but they're more expensive. And so we want to make sure that we're capturing the fees based on the trips so that we can actually build these projects. So for the city of San Carlos, we have policies in place to help level of service, that's the conditions of traffic flowing through intersections. So we would love to all have Level of Service A intersections, free flow, everybody hardly ever has to stop and there's no congestion. But sometimes we find that we have Level of Service F, which is what we consider to be very congested stop-and-go traffic. So for the city, it's impractical to try to provide a Level of Service A everywhere. So typically, we look at a mid-level Level of Service D or better, which is during the peak hour times. So middle of the day, we're going to have better conditions, but during those peak hour times, we're going to have some congestion. And so this is what industry has kind of determined as a, an acceptable level of service. So there were several intersections that were studied as part of the update of the fee, 20 altogether, and as you can see from the diagram on the screen, they are mostly the major intersections within the community for our arterial street network, and they are ones which are mostly, most impacted by traffic as it is traveling throughout the city. The study also assumed growth, and we worked with our planning staff, Al Sve, Lisa Porus... The study also assumed growth, and we worked with our planning staff, Al Svei, Lisa Porres, to find out what are the approved projects, what's already approved, not yet completed, what are the foreseeable projects that have kind of fallen into the middle, and then what are the general plan projected growth projects. So, all those things add to the traffic impacts that we'll see as a community, and so we want to make sure we're studying all of those. So, when we look at the cumulative level of development growth, this table, there's a lot of figures in there, but these are the, are what we worked out for the foreseeable and general plan projects. And so, on the far right, you can see the numbers of residential units, commercial square footage, office square footage, industrial square footage, and that's what we based the number of trips that would be generated from those developments. We looked at the cumulative traffic conditions, and on the screen, you can see some colors, green, blue, and red. They're not as visible as I had hoped, but they indicate where we have some deficiencies in our level of service at these various intersections. So, these are the areas that we would likely to be focusing the traffic impact mitigation projects. So, the list of projects that we have identified, Industrial Road at Holly Street, the Holly Street improvements, essentially, that's our freeway interchange project that has a, will have a significant effect of relieving congestion within the city, especially at that location. We've identified at Alameda de Las Pogas in Britton Avenue, the need for a separate right turn lane. We've identified Industrial Road and Britton Avenue, improvements on three out of the four legs there, which will be quite extensive to accommodate turning movements primarily. And at Industrial Road East San Carlos Avenue, a traffic signal that's been identified. And so, the total cost of those projects, almost $19 million. And one of the reasons we have the Holly Street project on there at its full cost is we currently have no identified other source of construction funding for the interchange improvements. The traffic impact mitigation fees can provide that, but we're, of course, we will be looking for outside sources of funding on that project. So, the traffic impact fee calculations, based on the total cost of the improvements, the projected peak hour growth, the development type, and we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is industry standard for these, the land use categories and the fee factors. We take the cost of the improvements, we divide them by the increase in peak hour trips, and voila, we have our fee. That's the proposal for moving forward in the city and essentially where we are with this today, as noted in the staff report. We have a fee for peak hour trip of $3,052, which is proposed, and it breaks down into these various categories. And then, we have, that is relative to the current fee at 2271. That's the current fee based on the previous study and, I guess, a couple of CPI adjustments over the past several years. So, we're looking at essentially over a 30% increase in that traffic impact fee. We looked at our neighbor cities and what the traffic impact fees are that they charge. We see they're kind of above and below us. We did have, we did have some late information, Redwood City does charge $1,500 for their traffic impact fee, and so we feel like we're in a position where, to be able to provide the funding for the projects that we need to mitigate the traffic impacts, we feel like we've reached an appropriate fee. And again, it's not excessive, but it does equate to the cost of the improvement projects. So, at this point, I'd be willing to take your questions, and certainly, our traffic consultants here, if you have anything more detailed than that.
All right. Thanks, Jay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jay. Actually, your comments about the Holly interchange reminded me that when we had the earlier discussion about Holly Street, and you were talking about how you were confident that the interchange reconstruction project would be moving ahead, I remember making a mental note, hmm, I wonder where the money's coming, and from there, I thought perhaps the Walter Family Trust would be making a sizable donation to make it happen. The, I presume, I support the work that's done here, but I presume that the amount of money that would be raised from this over the next few years is not going to make a significant dent, for example, in the cost of the Holly interchange project. I mean, that we still have a sort of a self-imposed unfunded mandate lurking out there that we have to figure out how to cover.
I think that's a correct assessment. When I talked to our finance staff, the 2014-16 budget had included, in the neighborhood of $360,000 of anticipated traffic impact fees coming in. And so, of course, when you look at this from the long term, you look at general plan build-out, and out 20 years from now, you have that, you would have, you would have built out and then collected those fees over that time period. So, we were starting out slow, and certainly, we'll see some new development here in the next couple of years that will increase the fee greatly. But I think you're right, we're going to be, we're going to be well short of where we need to be when the project does come ready for construction, and that's where we'll seek outside funding.
And I may have missed this, and I apologize, but when was the last time that we adjusted the fees?
In 2010.
So, is there, is there a statutory limitation on how frequently we adjust them?
I don't believe so.
Then, I would make an observation that the other fees that we just got finished changing primarily get driven, their cost increases primarily get driven by inflation costs, which is in fact why we, you know, base the metric on that. Traffic mitigation fees actually get generated not only by inflation costs, but also by economic vitality and construction, a lot of other things. So, personally, to the extent there are significant changes to the traffic load in town that we anticipate, I would support staff bringing back changes more frequently, you know, rather than wait several years, because we do need to collect money to deal with this. As we all know, the Quality of Life Survey that we did, the most recent one, I think concerns about traffic were the number one issue that came out of that. Was that not right, Jeff? So, you know, whatever small steps that this takes to demonstrate that we're actually trying to do something about it, I think is very, very, very important. Thank you.
Okay. Bob?
Jay, I guess, I got thoroughly confused, I guess, I apologize. Could you put your schedule up, or go back one more? Yeah, that one. So, I'm reading this on page, whatever page it is, page two of your report, and I, you know, I glance at this stuff, and I look at this, and it says current fee, and then it says proposed fee. So, I'm thinking that we were raising it, you know, $4,500 or $1,200, and I'm thoroughly confused on, are these add-ons? This schedule that you have here is not, it doesn't, it's not going from 3382 to 4547. This, I'm looking at my staff report.
Right. Yes. Okay. So, again, an explanation for this chart. So, what you can see is on the far--
Not this chart, this chart. This chart. This is where I'm confused. You have current fee and proposed fee, and that's where I'm confused, right at the bottom? See the bottom?
Yes.
Okay.
And what's missing from that chart--
Uh huh.
--is the middle piece, which is, starting here, ITE code, unit of measure, average trip generation rate factor. So, those three pieces are missing from the, to help you to be able to do the math--
Okay.
--of going across the page.
Okay.
So, what we start with is, at 2271--
Mm-hmm.
--that's the base fee rate.
Okay.
The different land uses have what's called the different average trip generation rate factor.
I don't need all the technical terms, I'm just looking at the dollars here. I'm sorry, I apologize. So, 2271's going to 3052?
2271's going to 3052. That's the base rate.
And 3384's going to 4547?
3380--
It's not online here, so this sheet is not online, so--
You know.
Can I help?
You better do, because I'm completely confused.
So, what's being lost here is that the fee is based on per peak hour trip.
Okay.
But what is in the staff report is based on per square foot.
Right.
And so, there's--
That's where I'm confused.
There's a conversion from square foot--
Yeah. So, I'm trying to understand, if I want to build a office right now, and we haven't passed this, what do I pay?
You pay--
2271?
You pay, okay, right now, today--
Today.
You pay 2271 times 1.49.
Okay.
Okay? And then, you multiply by the square foot.
Is that 3384?
That's the 3384.
Okay. So, today, I pay 3384.
Per square foot.
Per square foot.
Yep.
That's all I pay?
Yep.
Tomorrow, assuming we pay this, we do this, what do I pay?
4547 per square foot.
4547.
Per unit.
Okay. Okay. So, now, I understand why this is, it goes from here to here. Okay. All right. Thank you, Cameron. I'm sorry, I just never got this. I just didn't--
At any time.
Yeah, right. I'm the numbers guy. Anyway, I thought this was, anyway, whatever. I made my comment.
Thank you, Bob. Matt?
So, I have a question regarding all the projects that you had on that list that added up to 18 million, something or other. And I noticed that they're all basically, you know, roadway improvements, asphalt, maybe traffic lights, that kind of thing. And I don't see anything that includes something like, you know, this is traffic mitigation, so I would be looking for, you know, possibly something like, we've talked about shuttles, for instance, or other forms of transportation, like pedestrians and bicycles and things like that. Is there a reason that those kind of things are not considered in this, or not?
The way the fee was initially constructed was based on vehicle trips and level of service.
Okay.
So, that's the, that's the basic reason for that. Now, there are moves afoot. For example, our circulation element in the general plan is calling for what are called transportation demand management strategies to be included in order to help developments reduce the number of vehicle trips. What we don't have in this update is, say, the TDM-type projects that would be done within the public right-of-way. So, that's probably the next step at the next update that we would do for the fee. We would--
Are we not doing it now because of legal reasons, or are we doing it just because we need to catch up with that idea?
We're, well, in part, we're trying to catch up with that idea, but we are already requiring the PAF project as an example, where they were required to do a 20% reduction and have those various measures that are implemented on their property by their employees and patrons.
Of course, that was a, now, were we able to do that because it was a, I don't know what you call it, a PUD or something? They were going outside the zoning, so they, we had to rewrite the zoning for that site so we could do all kinds of things. But when we're not doing that, can we still do those kind of things?
Yes, we can still do that. We can still give them credit for reducing their trips by employing the transportation demand management strategies.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Okay. Cameron, I think your light was on, now it's off. Did you?
I'm okay.
You changed your mind. Okay. All right. This is a public hearing, and I see one member of the general public. Are you, Nicole? You didn't sign up to speak on this. Did you want to speak on this?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I don't see any members of the public, so--
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
I'm sorry, I have one more. I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, if I can understand this, basically, we're raising the costs of this, these, let's say, for a, an apartment, you're raising it 400, about $1,200 altogether, if I want to build one apartment. I apologize, but--
That's okay.
I wish I'd gotten this report the way you presented it, I wouldn't have any questions, but unfortunately, I got confused, and I still am. So--
So, from a--
How much does it cost right now to build an apartment?
Right now, it costs $1,181 to build an apartment.
11--
Per unit.
1181.
And so, that's, you can see--
Why would it cost?
Point 62 times 2281 is 1181.
Okay. Let me, all right. I'm sorry, I don't know where you're getting these numbers, but okay, 1181. All right.
Then, the updated fee would end up being 1892 per unit.
1892. So, what you're saying is total cost of land use and of traffic mitigation is about $711, $711 increase.
The increase.
The increase. So, if you're going to build 200 units, you're going to pay $142,000 more.
More.
Okay. I guess the question is, are the Wheeler Plaza and the Transit Village, are they under the old rules or the new rules?
Transit Village is under the old rules, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
And Wheeler Plaza, I'm not sure in terms of entitlement status where they would land. I'd have to check with Director Svei on that.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize. Yes?
Okay. Yes, what?
Councilmember Grisilli? A Gocut?
I got it. Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Good.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Item 11, new business.
No.
Oh, wait a minute.
That was just to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor--
I apologize.
I move to a Resolution 2015 dash--
Yes.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos updating the traffic impact mitigation fees for fiscal year 2015 to 16, based on an estimated cost of $3,052 per PM peak hour trip to provide funding for the needed capital improvement program.
Second.
I blame it all on Bobby, got me all confused.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
All right. Now, I think we can move on. All right. New business. Consideration of introducing an ordinance adding Chapter 8.41 to the municipal code to restrict boat and trailer parking.
Good evening, Mayor Collins, member of the City Council. Greg Roth is police chief. I'm here before you tonight to ask the council to consider an ordinance that restricts boat and trailer parking on city streets. As you know, it's really a common complaint, a common problem that we have in the community, especially in some neighborhoods. Parking is pretty tight, and people are often hunting for places to park. And in some cases, streets are pretty narrow, making it very difficult to get around certain vehicles. And we have getting increasing complaints about boat parking and trailer parking in the community. About six or seven years ago, the City Council adopted an ordinance very similar to this one, and to prevent and restrict motorhome parking in the community. And so, this ordinance is essentially a knockoff from the motorhome ordinance that was adopted by council about five or six years ago. The ordinance does give room, though, and acknowledgement that these boats and trailers are used for recreational purposes, and for one reason or another, and to facilitate their use, a homeowner may want to come and bring it in front of their house and park it there for a while, for whatever reason. And the ordinance does go ahead and allow that. So, that's my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
I'm not seeing any questions. I actually have one. You mentioned the motorhome ordinance.
Correct.
What is the, what is the rule in town regarding parking motorhomes in front of
If you needed to do it to facilitate an overnight use, if you wanted to, you know, if you were going to go in the morning early and you wanted to bring it home so that you could pack it up, you can use that, do that. If you need to, if you need to do it for short periods, you can get a permit from me, and I can do that, I think, twice a year. I can do permits of up to 14 days, as long as it doesn't interfere with public right-of-ways and public health and safety. And that would be the same with the boat ordinance. So somebody could absolutely bring their boat home before a trip, they needed to keep it out in front because they wanted to wash it and work on the stereo or whatever, they could certainly do that. But the idea of just leaving the boats on city streets, leaving them parked there, and taking up valuable parking spaces, and in some cases restricting roadway and choking roadway down, is something that, you know, I think the council should consider, and 67, 66% of the cities in this county have done this already, so, in one shape or form or another.
Okay. Mark, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg, actually Greg and Greg, I'm not sure who this falls under. The question I have, I support what staff has put together here, but the question I have is, are there any other sources of roadway restriction, congestion, safety that, like you were talking about, chief, other than boats and trailers and motorhomes that we ought to be considering as well for regulation?
Not, not that I can think of right now. We do have an ordinance with, with respect to vehicles, motor vehicles, or, and there's a vehicle code with respect to that, that requires you to move your car every 72 hours. So that is a similar type of a restriction. It's really a lot tougher to do with boats, but, you know, so right now, I think, once we pass the ordinance, we've got campers, calibored, motorhomes, trailers, boats, and I'm not sure that we left anything out.
Well, really, my question is, you're in the best position, I mean, people sometimes write to us, but you're in the best position to know of complaints from residents, and so you're confident that we've, we've covered pretty much what we need to cover.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any lights on. We do have a, thank you, Greg. We have a speaker card. Nicole Massey. Hi, Nicole. Sorry to make you wait all evening.
Less intimidating crowd now, though, than earlier, so it's not too bad. Good evening, and thanks for letting me speak here. My name is Nicole Massey, and I am a city resident. And I'd like to start by thanking the council and city staff and the police department for their attention to the issue of boat and trailer parking on city streets. Unfortunately, too many of our neighbors in San Carlos are abusing our city rules that we do have in place on parking and our storing their RVs permanently on our city streets, creating safety, property value issues, and parking issues for the broader community. And I'd just like to share a tale of the two boats on my street, just to help illustrate the impact of this ordinance on the community and really help to bring it to life. So, I don't know how well you'll be able to see these, but both of these boats are currently living in front of my house. These pictures were both taken from my front porch this evening before coming to the meeting. This boat usually lives in storage. When it is on the street, it is parked in front of the owner's driveway, which is where it is right now, and is only there for 24 to 48 hours while the owner is getting it ready for a trip. The ordinance under consideration should not impact the owner of this boat or his family and their ability to use and enjoy their boat. This boat always lives on the street, pretty much in this exact spot. Despite efforts by the sheriff and by the neighborhood, with the boat owner, he continues to believe that it is his right to store his boat permanently on the street at all times. This ordinance is designed to specifically help for this kind of situation, and to help the neighborhood address the safety issues that are caused. I live on a very narrow street up in the hills north of San Carlos Ave, which is a thoroughfare for Arrendal Elementary. So I kind of really wanted to just bring these in to help illustrate and give you a real-life example. I strongly support adding Chapter 8.41 to the municipal code as a common sense step to help the city and the sheriff to enforce RV parking restrictions on our city streets, and certainly specifically on mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to introduce ordinance-
1488.
1488, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, adding Chapter 8.41 to the municipal code to restrict boat and trailer parking.
A second.
I heard Johnson.
I don't see anybody-
I'll let the vice chairman have it.
Anybody want to make any comments before we move?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, Matt?
I just wanted to let Mark know, he was asking the chief about any other kind of vehicles. I've watched plenty of Duck Dynasty episodes, and I can't think of anything else that, you know, we might park on the street, and, you know, so we probably got it covered.
Maybe motorcycle, motorcycle.
Well, that's true. There would be on a trailer.
You're not parking the street? Okay.
All right. If there's no other comments, Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Item 11B. This is our consideration approving updated city council subcommittees and ad hoc committees' list for 2015. Take it, everybody got a list?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Jeff Maltby. My report will be brief. The appointment calendar is before you this evening for two recommended changes. The first two include the new community choice aggregation committee that was set up by the county. They recently asked for volunteers.